Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Otomo City Council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order if everybody would rise for the Pledge of Legions, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's consent agenda. We have a motion to approve.
Your Honor, I'd like to... Maybe you want me to approve it first, and then I'd like to make comment on it?
Okay.
I'll approve it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And I would like to remove item four and five from the consent agenda and have it under discussion elsewhere. And we want to bring the item that was tabled previously off the table when it comes time.
Yeah, we'll do that under approval of agenda. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'll have Chris take the role on the consent, the modified consent agenda.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approval of tonight's city council agenda. We have a motion to approve.
I would move to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of taking resolution number eight dash twenty twenty-four from the table and putting it as the first resolution under section I resolutions.
Is there any...
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item is our city administrators' report to the council and the citizens of Otomo. I'll turn it over to Phil Raff.
Thank you, your honor, Mayor. Before we bring up the interfinance director, I understand that it is a resolution on... Or, sorry, proclamation on human trafficking that you had prepared and you wanted to have presented.
Uh, yes, thank you. The city's done a proclamation before on human trafficking in January. It's Human Trafficking Month. So in a minute, I'm going to call Megan Logan up here. I'm going to let her sit, and I'm going to sit to read this because it's rather lengthy. So let me get this read, and then I'll have Megan Logan come up. She is the chairperson of our Waplo County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. This mayoral proclamation is about slavery and human trafficking prevention month. The United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. Slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. This heinous, heinous crime is found within our own community. The Waplo County Coalition Against Human Trafficking and the Rotary Club of Otomo are working towards the abolishment of all forms of human trafficking through education, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services theme for Human Trafficking Prevention Month in 2024 is activate connections to prevent human trafficking. This is an opportunity to highlight the importance of collaborating across multiple sectors to build human trafficking prevention initiatives at work. Even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go underreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. Increased community education, how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors as well as help diminish the number of future victims. Every business, community, organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now therefore, I, Richard W. Johnson, Mayor of Otomo, I would hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and encourage all citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. So I'd like to have Megan come up, and I'd like to present her with this proclamation. And thank you for all your work that you do on our coalition as well. Appreciate it very much.
Megan, could I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Are... I have been shown the sign for help that people use when they need help quietly. Do you know that sign? I'm sure you probably do. And could you show that to the rest of the people?
Oh, well, I mean, you can. Yes.
That means help in any direction. I think it's good to help. Even old people need to know that.
Yes.
I would also state that on January 22nd, from nine thirty to eleven thirty, we are... The Waplo County Human Trafficking Coalition is doing a training to train the public and community members regarding human trafficking. And so you can go to our Facebook page, Waplo County Human Trafficking Coalition, to sign up for that training. And that's the first of many that will be coming in the near future. Travis, I'll also send it to you, and you can, like, push it on Facebook, too. Thank you.
Is there any other comments regarding Human Trafficking Month? If not, I'll go ahead and turn back over to Phil Raff.
Okay, thank you. And then at this time, I will ask the interfinance director to insert via the status financial reporting of city funds.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, yes, so the last time that I was in front of you, two weeks ago, we were just getting the audit. Uh, we survived that week, barely, but we survived. Uh, we did not get everything done while they were... They are on site, and so there has been a lot of work that we are still trying to do to get them... To get some entries done back in fiscal year 23 to match what they would like to see in the financial statements. Uh, so that is still happening at a much slower pace than when they were on site. Um, I would like to thank my team for being very, very responsive to them. Um, there was a lot that we were able to get done. I think Kristin is holding a four-inch stack of invoices for them in a very short amount of time. Um, and all of this is happening not in our home environment as well, so it makes for an interesting time. Uh, for fiscal year 24, you acknowledged on the consent agenda, September, October, and November financial statements. Uh, there are a few things, or one thing tonight on the agenda related to the month of December, as well as a few other things that we are still trying to get wrapped up and posted to the month of December. I don't think that we'll have those for the first meeting in February. But it's possible that that could happen, but likely sometime in February is when we'll see December. Um, and then, of course, we are in process with fiscal year 25. The state finally got us their budget worksheet, and so, um, and we have our evaluation. So just the big heads up right away is that this is the first year of the combined general fund levy, which got rid of some specific ones, which we will talk more about in detail. And the great news is that our valuation grew. The bad news is that it grew by more than three percent, which means that combined general fund levy is going to decrease from what it was, uh, the current fiscal year. So we'll be talking a lot more about that next Thursday, or next Tuesday, the 23rd, will be our first budget workshop where we'll be talking about debt service and capital fund, the capital items. And then I'm working on putting together the general fund as we speak so that we can internally figure out where we're at and when we can get that to you, knowing that that one's going to be an important one. And then probably any ancillary funds where we have some different transfers out from the general fund. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does Council have any questions for Jessica?
I'm sure we'll see more information on that next meeting. Twenty-third, is that what you said?
Yeah, the 23rd. We're really going to keep it focused to debt service and capital because those are fairly interrelated. And to start our pre-levy process for any borrowing that doesn't happen in 2024, there are things that need to happen in the month of February for that to be included on an upcoming tax levy.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jessica? If not, I would just like to say how much I really appreciate all your excellent work that you've done on behalf of the city. These are several lots, and you've been really a Godsend to us in helping us get our financial situation back up to par where it needs to be. And I really appreciate some of the suggestions and recommendations that you've been making on how we become more efficient and how we report our financial status every month. So kudos to you, and thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. I've appreciated being here. So Phil, uh, Phil and I talked in July, and it just so happened that things worked out, and it's been... The ability to be here has been great for me, too, and to just get back into this, even though it's very frustrating at times. It's definitely good to be in the numbers scheme. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Phil?
No, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, the next item is where I ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. And we have a couple of people that have requested to speak. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Because I'll call on you when we get to those sections of the agenda. Uh, Katie Howard, what would you like to speak about, number four or five?
Yes. Well, not about Bozai specifically, but your policy company, Sam.
Policy on consent, the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
So probably no.
Yeah, you can go ahead and speak.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the additional microphones. This is much improved at all times. I wanted to... I understand the efficacy of a consent calendar. You need to get business done as quickly as you can. I am concerned about items four and five, both of which exceed $25,000. For the purposes of clarity, transparency, and also the opportunity... Let me be clear. I don't have any particular concern with those two items. This is a policy question. So for purposes of clarity, transparency, and the opportunity for public input, I'm asking if you have any sort of like upper cap for what you put on consent calendar versus on the regular agenda. Is there a policy on that?
So those two particular items that you're asking about, they were approved by the fleet committee. So any items that are approved through the fleet committee, regardless of the cost, can be placed in the consent agenda if they were budgeted for.
So that's a policy matter, then?
That's... It's based on our purchasing policy, and it follows that. Um, you know, it's in our code.
Okay, thank you.
If you wanted me to send that to you, I can tomorrow when I'm in the office. Yeah, I can do that.
So are there other items, are there items in that are not... So is there a cap for consent calendar items that are not approved by that committee?
There is, and that is spelled out in our document handbook.
Okay.
Um, which I can send you that as well if you would like to see that.
I would appreciate it.
So if you're staying for the meeting and if you want to give me your email address, then I can send that to you.
Thank you very much.
And generally speaking, things that are considered to be less controversial or routine minutes, the financial information of month-to-month, the licenses, those things are typically in there. But as we saw at the beginning of the meeting, anything that's in that consent agenda can be pulled for further discussion and screening.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't turned in a form? Okay, if not, moving forward to the public hearing.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the consideration of a ten-year municipal lease and operating agreement between the City of Otomo and AAW Golf Course LLC.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Turn it over to Phil Raff, our city administrator.
Thank you, your honor, Mayor. Uh, so we... This is an item, and I mentioned to the council earlier today, we're still working through the final details of the agreement. And so unless there is anyone here to speak about this particularly tonight, uh, I would make a request to the council to continue this public hearing over to the next meeting. Uh, and ideally by that time, we will have finalized an agreement that you'll have a chance to review and, um, and have that available for the public viewing as well and any commentary that they may have at that next meeting.
So do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to the next city council meeting in February? I'll make my motion, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a question.
Councilmember Galloway?
How... So right now, we don't have a current contract for the golf course. So what is kind of in the interim until this gets approved? How are we operating?
Uh, they have been continuing the operations out there. There's obviously not a whole thing going on with, especially with the last week we had here. Uh, but I have a message that I received just a little bit ago from Adam, who is the apparent contractor, requesting a interim process there. So I'm looking at what we can do that he can carry forward, make payroll and everything else for the this past month and going forward until that contract is finalized.
Is there any further questions?
Well, I do. Um, so it's covered under insurance, and since we don't have an active contract?
Well, we have, I mean, the insurance for the area itself, I mean, anything that they would own would be under their own property insurance.
Just confirming. I just want to make sure that we're covered in the instance something does happen out there.
So was your reference regarding liability insurance?
Just in general, if something were to happen, yes, liability, you know, we just don't know what happens. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances tonight, so we'll move to departmental recommendations or reports.
Termination of lease agreement for the Boy Scout Building in the Greater Otomo Park. Recommendation, authorize termination of lease agreement between the City of Otomo and the Board of Trustees of the Chief Waplo Trail Boy Scouts.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Pro the recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Jean, I believe you're going to take this.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Board of Trustees of the Chief Waplo Trail, also known as the Boy Scouts, have decided that they want to terminate the lease agreement for the Boy Scout Building in Otomo Park effective February 1st, 2024. A copy of the email from Mike Marshall is attached, as well as the lease agreement. The Boy Scout Building will be used as the command center for RagRat and also rented as a picnic shelter. The Boy Scout Building is in excellent condition, and the termination of the lease agreement with the Chief Waplo Trail Council, also known as the Boy Scouts, was approved by the Otomo Parks Advisory Board effective meeting on January 11th, 2024.
The Boy Scout meeting will be used as the command center for RagRat if Otomo gets selected as the host city, correct?
Correct.
And we should know that by the end of January. Is there any questions?
Yes, Jean. Jean, I am not questioning anything, but I am commenting. I think the original lease was a 25-year lease.
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And that there is language in there that if the leasing chooses to terminate, giving us 60 days' notice in advance, he or she could do that.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jean? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Authorizing city staff to solicit requests for proposals regarding the purchase and installation of an updated financial software program. Recommendation, authorize the finance director to proceed with issuing RFPs related to updated financial software program for the City of Otomo.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Solvo. I'll turn this over to Phil and Jessica.
Okay, um, one of the things that I think many of you are already aware of is that the software that the city is using is quite antiquated. It's essentially an AS400 IBM type of software. Um, to give you an example, we were training a new person on accounts receivable, and the instructions we were working on were printed in 2006, and it's the same. The functionality compared to what is out there today in the market is just night and day difference. Um, a lot of the journal entries that we need to make are not anything that the system can produce automatically. Um, someone has to spend some time and put all of the information into an Excel spreadsheet for then the spreadsheet to be printed out, hand stamped with a journal number, and then basically given to somebody else to hand enter into the system. When we're talking about having to do that for payroll, we're talking about something that is 400 lines long and takes around three to four hours to do for one person. And so there are some things that are just taking way too much, um, time from staff to be able to do where they're essentially automated processes with new software. So, um, I have prepared a draft of an RFP, and it is ready to go, and would have responses coming back in, um, March with you, March to you with the recommendation, hopefully a contract for approval. Uh, we'll be talking about funding this with bond proceeds at the next council meeting. By issuing an RFP, you have no commitment to basically say, yes, we're going to do this, although my recommendation to you would be, yes, we need to do this. Um, so I would recommend that we issue the RFP and see what we get for responses and evaluate those in March. I do know that, um, the RFP says that there would be a selection committee to help review, which would use some finance staff, other city staff, and then there's always room for a council member or two in reviewing those RFPs and functionality as well. So we'll open that up when the time will come. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have an outside guess at what we might be spending?
Probably $250,000 to get started. And then I would guess that we're probably going to see some annual maintenance fees in the neighborhood of upwards, I would hope upwards of $50,000 a year. Um, that it depends on whether you're going to be server-based or cloud-based.
And since this is not in the budget projected, you are talking about bonding for this item?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jessica?
What are we paying right now for our system?
Um, you know, I just ran across an invoice for, I think it was like $10,800 that was paid to Admin Insights, who is the current provider. Um, I do know that I think we also pay a maintenance fee on the IBM server. Another thing that is really kicking this into a necessity is that IBM sent us a letter saying that our server that runs the financial software will no longer be supported as of May 31st of this year.
And just to confirm, too, again, you said that staff are spending three to four hours on just, for example, one. Uh, so that time is being used where it could be utilized somewhere else, too, and we're paying for this, something that if we were to update our system, it would definitely take or reduce that time.
Correct.
And the amount that we're making.
Correct.
So basically, Jessica, this is, even though we would have an outlay of costs, it's going to save us money in the long run. It's going to be more efficient, and I'm assuming the learning curve is going to be greatly reduced for people who have you or people who have systems, right?
Yeah, and I think the one thing that probably maybe everybody doesn't know is we only hold a limited number of licenses for the system. So none of the department heads have access into the financial system. With new software, they would have access into the system, be looking at their own budget data, um, you know, coding their own items and looking at things in a real-time way where that just doesn't happen right now.
So it actually extends, everybody can look at budgets, everybody knows what's going on, puts them on the same page, right?
Any other questions for Jessica?
Will you be sending this to specific people, like a general RFP, and then also do you kind of have a few programs in mind?
Yeah, we have a few. I know there's a few mentors that Phil had already met with, and then a few that have reached out by email, and then we'll also post this on the League of Cities website as well.
Thank you.
Could you email the name of the software, Ashley, so we can do our own research, just to look into? Not that we're, you know, trying to make a decision for you.
Yeah, I'll put together a distribution list, and we will share that.
Any other questions? No, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Can I re-remind and pick up four and five off the consent agenda?
Yes, the items that you removed from the consent agenda. I'm going to go ahead and do item number four. Um, authorized purchase of four-host lift from Ben Pack in the amount of $36,765 for the public works garage.
And my question regarding that was, I apparently wasn't on council when that was approved. And so that's the reason I had to ask the question, because if you don't want us for, um, we shouldn't approve.
Well, and to clarify, the council didn't approve it from what I just heard from Chris, the fleet... Fleet, fleet, yes, and it's a budgeted item, correct?
Which Phil can answer that to, I think.
Yeah, it was a budgeted items for the central garage, the central garage.
And are we replacing something with the new one, or?
Yeah, we're replacing an old one. So the inspection from the old one's off here that shows the rust and the broken welds. And so this new one will replace that existing four-host lift we have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions for Phil? So we need a motion to approve the recommendation? Solvo.
Second.
Need further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Approving purchase of a Sochia IX 605 robotic total station kit from Transit Works for the sum of $27,898 for the engineering department.
Phil, would you like to say something on this?
Yeah, so this is replacing our total station. The one we have now, we've sent to Omaha several times for repair, and it's just, they can't repair it. It'll just stop working and we'll have to send it back again. Anyway, it's a little bit over the budget. Uh, we have budgeted for chairs for the office, so we're just not going to purchase those chairs this year and use that money to pay the difference. The upgrade is, right now, the one we looked at first only had a narrow range where it looks for the rod. And if you get behind a tree or a car comes past, it'll lose that and have to go back to your previous spot, like your previous point you shot in, for it to catch it again. Whereas this one, it scans 360, so no matter where you're at, it'll find your rod again, be able to do a survey pattern that way.
It looks to me like, and I'm a little confused about it, I've been confused about things before.
That's right.
Um, it looks to me like we're buying it from a transit system, but is it for the transit system?
No, it's a transit, so it's...
Transit Works.
Transit Works. It's a total station. It's a survey instrument that we use to survey our roads before and after we construct it, before and during construction.
Thank you for that comment. That's helped me to understand.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Solvo. No other questions or comments? Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thanks, Phil.
Resolution number eight, 2024, approving and authorizing execution of an agreement for private development and off-site interference by and between the City of Otomo and Christian Properties LLC. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number eight, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Solvo.
Okay, I believe, Zach, you're going to present on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, this item was tabled at the last meeting, and I want to start, I want to apologize for not being at the last meeting. Um, I appreciate that Phil and Jake Rush were able to speak a little bit about this, but I do regret not being here to provide additional information. I worked the most on this. And, uh, in the future, I will try to set a good expectation that I'll be here when we have these development agreements on the agenda and I want to make sure that I can answer all the questions that you have. Uh, I was on vacation that week, but we'll time that better next time. Uh, I also want to take a little bit of time as well to say that, uh, my understanding is the council is wanting to get more feedback on upcoming projects so that you can anticipate, uh, these things and know... on upcoming projects so that you can anticipate these things and know a little bit more about them. That's something we're trying to figure out a good way of doing. A lot of times the projects have to remain confidential while they're in development because there's things like acquisition of property that are affected by having it come out too early, that there's a project coming together. So we'll try to figure out how we can do that to provide those updates on upcoming projects so that you're ready to vote when they come up a little bit better. So anticipating seeing that because there are quite a few projects still in the pipeline. Last year was the biggest year we had for new development in decades in Atumwa by valuation. And we're anticipating the economy slowed down a little bit, we're seeing some fewer projects. We still have a lot coming, so we do want to make sure that everybody's informed and we're able to tackle those as they come up. This project is addressing what was identified as the most urgent priority for the city in the last couple of years. It is advancing some of the goals set out in the housing study that are important for a lot of the different parts of our strategy going forward. The city housing is a key part of our strategy for economic development, finding new industry, finding new commercial development. It's also really key to our workforce development, making sure that the folks that fill the jobs that we have open in the community right now have a place to rest their heads at night. And also make sure that we can retain the folks that are in commuting into Atumwa and leaving and spending all their money in better communities. We want to try to find a way to keep them here as well. One of the key things in the housing study that we've really seen is the hardest challenge is getting accomplished the goals we had around market rate housing at a price point over 250, over 300,000, which is what's being looked at here, is a four-unit single-family market rate subdivision on East Court. This is one of the few areas, looking at a map in the City of Atumwa, where we're able to build even four units at scale without any investment in new street or larger infrastructure than that. It's functionally infill, but it's four units at market rate, which is something we've struggled to find an opportunity for. And so we did see a lot of value in this project and that's why staff worked with Anthony Christner to try to figure out what a reasonable degree of incentive might be. The sewer work was part of the pro forma that was the hardest for Christner to put together. The location here and the type of development, it really just makes sense that it is on sewer, but this particular block was never developed because it never quite reached the sewer. The next block over on each side is served, it seems like, or there's a lot in that area that is served, but this didn't get there. The cost of the sewer works $81,000. And we spent a good deal of time going back and forth trying to figure out if there was a role for the city there. And the recommendation here, what's put together with the development agreement is to use funding in the sewer fund to assist with the cost of sewer construction, 75% for $52,000. I understand that at the last meeting, there was a little bit of discussion of how that number is reached. Part of my role is that under Phil's supervision, I do try to work together with the developers on these sorts of things and put together what is the best approach for the city. Anthony started from a different number than 75. We also started at a number below 75% and it took us quite a while to reach an agreement there. In that time, the project did go ahead and begin. This project's about 25% of the way done, but the incentive is a critical part, as I understand it, completing the rest of the development. It's pretty key to getting the last three houses built, as I understand it. Anthony's here today, he's going to speak a little bit, he's actually prepared a lot of numbers that he can put in front of you. His entire pro forma, all the costs he's going to make available for you to look at. These are not, this is not a project where he's making a lot of money. It really is about his being a partner on the housing program from the beginning. He's been part of the Mission 500 group that put together the housing study, he's been in the meetings where we've tried to figure out what we can do to get these units built. And I do appreciate the partnership there and I think that going forward, I think that you will kind of see there is a lot of value here. I think that's probably all I have to say right up front. I'll be happy to answer further questions, but first Anthony, you want to speak a little bit on it as well, so I'll hand it over to Anthony Christner.
Thanks.
Captain, thank you. Well, that person out there is the first of what I hoped to be four market rate houses in the city on East Court. When you started talking about the streets, the streets, when I originally bought these lots, the lots were turned opposite facing two roads that the city are not maintaining. One's basically alley and one's behind the women's shelter or something. I worked with gardener, French manager, Zach, we turned those lots so now we can access East Court with no city work and streets to the north there.
Bellows?
Bellows.
Lincoln.
Lincoln, I'm sorry, thank you. So therefore all four addresses will come off of that, again, these streets are there. So, and again, buying these lots, being part of the housing study, this is home. I did this out of passion. I did this for Atumwa needs. I did this a lot, a big part of this was me getting apprentices. CCI is the only non-union construction company in the state of Iowa that has a program that has accredited apprenticeship program and we're struggling to get help. We've been struggling, we're working with the state on this. This was part of, hopefully for in order come, that I was able to bring on two full-time apprentices. Teach them, one didn't work out as was planned, as all things do. But I wanted to take it on as a personal, as a personal goal, be with them every day with them, show them a trade and in turn, keeping the cost down as much as humanly possible. If you turn to page four, you'll see a 100% breakdown of what this house cost me. I sold the house for $347,000. It cost me $345,000 hard cost. I'm not in this to make money. I'm in this to help the community and to help the apprentices stay in the community. And I can help, I can train more than two or three a year to keep them to stay here. With the money on that, that we spent on the sewer, you know, we did, Zach and I argued quite a bit for a while to get to this number and agreed to this because had I had no help from the city as a partner, not as a handout, as a partner, each one of those costs, you're talking another $20,000 per lot, per house. You know, now we're pushing this number and what if a developer comes in and is truly trying to make money? You know, that's a $480,000 house and it shouldn't be, that's ridiculous. I'm the first one to admit this, it's ridiculous. That's why I want to show, open book, what I paid each subcontractor, what I paid for windows, what I paid for doors, what I paid for labor. I need your help in order for me to keep going out there and keep this cost down. And maybe we can get, according to our housing study that we got from RDG from 2122 housing study, it shows that we need seven by next year and another seven in 2030 of this specific 350-plus range. And we've got other groups of people in town working on the lower end of housing and I get that. This is where I want to be, this is my passion. So I guess that's.
Do these houses have basements?
I can't afford to put them in. It's another $68,000 to put a basement in that thing.
Per house?
Per house. Yes, Richard's getting insane, look whatever the cost anymore.
Mr. Christner, could I ask, in the information here, it says that you have been awarded about $10,000 per house from the city as part of our building program, which is fine, I think we should give you a subsidy. However, I have a really difficult time, well, last week, last time, we were told that you were already in construction and that if we did not authorize, that you were going to put in a septic system. And I don't think that's legal. And I think that there is a sewer on the corner of Bellows and East Court, which is within the 200-foot range, which is required by the city. And I think that to ask us, the council, to spend citizens' money to support your passion, if you use that word, I believe, I know it hurts, I'm figuring that out, I just don't think we should.
I agree. I can speak a little bit. So I think the septic thing was probably just a little bit of a miscommunication at the last meeting. I think what we were trying to illustrate is that the sewers needed to develop the lots. Theoretically, you could do a smaller development with septic, but septic was never on the table here. I don't think that anyone expects to purchase a lot of this location in the city and have it on septic, regardless of what distance it is from the sewer. I just don't think that was probably going to be reasonable.
I would agree with that and I think your statement from the last meeting was inappropriate and was wrong.
Right, and I was here at that last meeting, like I said, I don't know exactly how it was stated, but that is not part of the discussion here. What is part of the discussion is the numbers are playing there in front of you. It doesn't make sense to complete the project at four units at this scale to accomplish what we set out as a goal and we put out as a community, as one of our goals. And we have a good reason to do that, we have a lot of benefits, the benefit to citizens. It doesn't make sense to continue the direction without the additional incentives being discussed here. The sewer is the thing that made the most sense because of how the project came together and where the cost worked. But the point really is the total cost had to come down for the developer to get the project to come together. The other thing I'll add is, you know, it goes beyond passion, I think, you know, Anthony's talked a little bit about that because he's in some ways probably one of the few people who would take on the project because he has incentive beyond making money. Because he's not making as much money on this as he could on something else that he does. But from the community side of it, it's not just about fulfilling what he wants to do for its own sake. The units here, building this type of housing is important to answering a lot of the questions that we have in other policy areas. When we have the higher-income earners who are living in Atumwa and they can't find the houses that they want, they're competing with the people who make less money and they're getting those houses, they're not happy with them. They would rather have this house, but they're getting that house. They probably don't stay in their job as long because they're not having their house, whatever else. But also those lower-income families are now in a harder situation. They have to pay more to get into the housing they want. We have a lot of postpartum people in the housing market in Atumwa. We also have folks that just decide not to move here. They live in other places. The other thing is that we have a persistent valuation issue which creates core problems with providing services. If we don't address the housing valuation issue in a way that's going to make our budget continually sustainable, especially when the legislature is going to kick us from values. But anyway, if we don't address that issue, you know, we're going to have to talk about cutting services that are core services. It's not just, you know, the nice things we want to do, you know, it's talking about not having core services. And that's why it's a priority for the city to address the housing plan. And I have appreciated the partnership and from the staff side, it was a tough thing to come to. Anthony and I, Anthony said argued, and that's exactly the word, we battled a lot of the number because we have to do the thing, the number that's best for the citizen and I think we got close to where it is, so.
I have a question. Zach, tell me what, and maybe you can't, but what do you think the valuation or the taxes that will be received from this?
Property taxes.
Property taxes, right.
$3,800 per house.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
$3,800 per home.
$3,000.
Is what I was estimating that.
And probably about 60% of that is city taxes, is that about how long it works out, you know, it is. The total tax numbers, about 60% is the city, even if there's county, school and stuff?
I don't think, generally, I don't know ours specifically, but generally a city is more than 30% to 35%. School district, 50% or more.
I have the number around there. Yeah, 40%.
And I do agree, Zach, with what you've said. We've done a pretty good job, I think, over the years of developing a lot of lower-income housing for people in Atumwa. We desperately need some market rate housing for people that can afford it. That's an area that we're really deficient in.
Oh, I just, I have another question too. So it sounds like you, Zach, were creative too when the funding source that you looked at, so like the sewer fund?
I mean.
And when I say creative, I mean that in a good way.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, you know, Philip Burkmire would probably like even more creativity, I understand that.
Well, I guess that's my question then. How does that affect the sewer fund in the long run?
So that was a conversation that Phil and I had. I don't want to speak too much on the sewer fund, I'll just say that we all work together and figure that, obviously, it can fit in there. These new units will be paying into the sewer fund over time. Obviously, it'll take quite a while to reach the number that we're talking about here. I think there was also some discussion about potentially looking at another general fund, backfill into the sewer fund over time because there's going to be additional revenue that comes from these other ways as well. Phil, you want to add more to that?
Well, Jessica did look up some of the information and looking at the balance for the 610 sewer fund was three and a half million as of 63023. And then bank reconciliations through November 30th, looking about 4.9 million, I think is what was listed. So the $52,000, a small portion of that, yes, you'd be looking at paying sewer fees. I mean, if the city council wanted to refund the sewer fund over time, that's something that could be done through future taxes, but there's the, that would take time to do that. And I don't know if it's necessary because this is a sewer portion of the project. It's getting those four additional users on there. It's a, that's a policy decision of the council if you want it to go that way. And I will say, I apologize if the information, I was the one that mentioned about the septic last time and that was something, that was part of the early conversation, so I apologize if that was misconstrued. What I was trying to say is, early on, he was talking about trying to go from two homes to four homes and in order to do that, it needed to have the sewer because there wasn't enough room to have four homes with septic. That's what I was trying to get across. So I apologize if that was misconstrued.
And I guess I just have a couple more comments. How, if you don't mind me asking, how long did it take you to build? And seep, kind of that time?
Well, actually, because it was just me and a couple helpers, it took a little longer, so we were right at three months.
Okay. And then how long did it take you to sell it?
Actually, it sold before, before we.
So that shows the need for the house.
There's absolutely.
I guess that's what I was just trying to say. Did it sit on the market for a while? Okay. And then I guess my final comment would be, and I don't know if it was how it was presented or, but there was just kind of some, I think a lot of the frustration, I should say for myself, came from that it was just put out there that the city is very difficult to work with. And then this comes to us at the last minute and it's like, well, we don't, we can't be difficult to work with if we're getting things at the last minute. And again, I don't know if it was just how it kind of, our discussion, that's how it went. So I just want to ensure that, I guess my comment is that we're, I think that we as a council, again, I can't speak for everyone, are willing to have these conversations and willing to work with people, but just sometimes there's this perception that gets put out there that we're just difficult because we're asking questions. And I don't, I think it's a good thing to ask questions and to ensure that we're spending money appropriately because if we don't ask questions, then the public isn't informed or we're not informed. And so I don't want the idea that we're difficult to work with out there when we ask questions or we push back because I think, I think that's how you two had a conversation. You guys asked questions, you pushed back to each other and this is how you came forward. And I don't think that's being difficult, I think it's being responsible.
Absolutely. It sounds like it all could have been solved. Had I been here, if Zach had been here, it could have been presented like it is tonight, so.
I'd like to add that too. If we would have had this conversation last meeting, nothing against you, you were put in a difficult position and you did a fantastic job. I think it would have changed the tone. And I did do some quick figures here. I see that the $52,000, I mean, we do need market rate housing. I mean, we're having trouble drawing school teachers, we're having to draw, you know, medical doctors, nurses, medical care to Atumwa. And I know we need that housing to draw the grocery, you know, that's very important, along with other physicians too. I'm not making more physicians. But just quick, I do see how that $52,000 would make us money in as short as three, four years. So I mean, I get it, plus the value of the people we can draw in to stay here. Like I said, we have the giant, you know, teacher need, medical care need. So I'm in favor of it. So my only comment was just next time, you know, if you, you were, you know, you could have been here maybe $52,000 if you want $52,000. Like Councilmember Galloway said, we just had a little bit more information on the front side because I think all of us have similar, you know, the growth of Atumwa. I want to thank you for what you're doing and the next time we just talk about it.
So I believe you said that we need to come up with a better way of communication with all these folks as we enter these things because we have more condensed comment.
Which we like to hear, yeah.
I'd like to make a comment about this. I'm more for it now than I was two weeks ago. But my gut's telling me that you was promised behind closed doors that we was automatically going to say yes to this. And I think that the communication needs to come to us in her because you as a basements man, and I can tell your passion, but. because you as a business man, and I can tell you're passionate, but to me, it wasn't very wise to buy, start that project in hopes that we was going to say yes, and then if we said no because we're looking out for the taxpayers, then we look like bad people again, which is part of the gig, I mean, you get used to it. But to me, that's where my frustration is, and that, and you wasn't even at the meeting two weeks ago to explain it to us. So we went two weeks thinking, okay, where's this money going to come from? And how many people forward if we don't put a stop to it that's going to continue to do that? And then we almost feel obligated that we should do it. But I do feel better that, and I think you're making more in two thousand a house, or you wouldn't be living in a Tumwa great home. But, but I understand your passion, you know what I mean? And yeah, that's where my frustration is, and I think that someone probably told you that there's a good chance that we'll approve that, and that's what bothers me personally.
I guess I kind of want to speak to that, this, I didn't personally say anything, but it was being said. One thing we try to make as clear as we can all the way through is that Phil and I work together to put something together because if there's a stage where it needs to be confidential, or it's a stage where it needs a lot of work to come together, but we make it as clear as we possibly can that everything has got to go to the council first. There's definitely things where we say the number needs to come down because we cannot get it done at a hundred percent. That was one of the conversations we had, is it cannot get done at a hundred percent? We think it's more likely to do it seventy-five because we want to talk about not just the money, but also the precedent we set. We want to make sure that there's always the precedent, so he's got to have skin in the investment. But yeah, there's absolutely no promises that are made to anybody. And unfortunately, things take a long time to come together, and it's talked about legal together, in this case, we have the subdivision with the property description to get in together. And, you know, staring down costs, you're looking at costs continually going up, and I think Anthony made a decision there for a number of reasons, I think, that is fair saying, so.
I really think last time, I think it was in the presentation, because I want to be transparent, last week I was with the council and I, I was against it. Now that I hear this presentation, well, now that changed my mind, so I think if we would have heard that first or knew more information to begin with, I understand your passion, and I understand, Zach, I understand you're not a dishonest guy, I know that, I'm just saying, had we had, and I feel, I don't want to be like a big in on him because I'm not, I just think if we would have had this information two weeks ago.
And I just would like to comment too on that, I think that there's probably, if we had a conversation with Zach, and I'm guessing there's probably some conversations recently where people have asked, come to Zach or Phil and said, hey, I'm not going to do this project without money. And I imagine there's multiple times where Zach is probably like, well then, you're not going to get money from the city, you know, or, so I think that we need to look at both sides of it too. I think Zach probably, I mean, I think we've all heard some of those conversations too when it comes to different businesses wanting to come to town and different entities who want money from the city. And I think just in talking with Zach too, there's been times that he said, well, no, I can't bring that to the council, so.
Any other questions for Anthony Kristner or Zach?
I appreciate this, this helps a lot, and it helps with the explanation and answer questions too, so.
Mr. Kristner, I'm still troubled, you are a businessman, and I can't imagine that you bought those lots and started to build those homes with the thought in mind you were going to sell them at a loss. And just a moment ago, you said the first house that you had or have online is already sold. Sold a little too underpriced, needed more money to make a profit, needed more money to offset what you're asking the citizens of Tumwa to support your business with, I don't know.
Can I speak up? Can I speak? I don't want, I want you to hear it more. I am Anthony Kristner, obviously. I want you to know that we are a very well-off business. My husband is only doing this because he has set a beautiful business in place that has a team that supports him. He is not needed at the office. This was him going and truly helping the city in every way, shape and form. He has thought about this ever since he's been on Mission 500, he has wanted to do it, COVID-19, the prices went up. He bought the lots because Mission 500, sitting on Kelly Jenner and all the teams that he's went to. When he says he made no money, he made no money. And I'm sorry, it makes me a little passionate to hear someone accuse him of lying about it, because that is not the case, okay? So when he says he's passionate, he is, he's here to help, he does expect and want the city to support him in it, but no, no money paid.
Any other comments, questions before we take the roll?
My comment, final comment is, I still think it's wrong to ask the citizens of Tumwa to support a private enterprise in the building of their projects. We've already given ten thousand dollars per home from the city, which is tax dollars, and I think that's a fair assignment.
And I guess I would just comment that as a city, we want to grow, and sometimes growing means partnering with other companies, private, nonprofits, whatever. We have to look to partner at some times. And some, when we partner, we do have to give money sometimes, but we do, I think that's why I've asked the questions, what is the tax, like the property taxes going to be, how are we going to recoup the money? And I think there's some times where we're not going to recoup it, and it doesn't make sense. And there's other times where we are, if we look at our Main Street, look at what we've done, we've been able to give money to that, and we've recouped that in, what, a couple years? And so I think that we have to think outside the box.
I have just one more I want to add.
I want to add some, Zach, before, and Mr. Kristner, I want to know, I see nothing out of the ordinary about a Tumwa having a passion, a Tumwa having a passion, what do you think? So I appreciate your passion, and I know you have a good business, and I know you've been up there to do this. Also, I think we need to, when we talk about using citizens' money, yes, we are using citizens' money, but it's not like we're flushing it down the toilet, we're using the fifty-two thousand dollars, which is eventually going to make the city money. So you're making a lower amount so we can make more to benefit the city of Tumwa. So, you know, I would just like to comment that it isn't like we're getting that back, I mean, I did figures in, in a few short years, we will get that back, not only, you know, I think ahead the value we can get from it, if we get a doctor, a teacher, somebody in, you know, a welder, a plumber, or anyone who comes and takes one of those houses that serves the city of Tumwa, and serves them in a good way, we benefit in more ways than just monetary. I mean, we benefit with adding citizens, and, you know, we're going to have to add housing. So I just want, you know, I just want to make sure I had, and I see nothing out of the ordinary about someone, you've lived here, how long have I lived here? So, you know, actually, I can relate to you, I've lived in Tumwa all my life, and I love it, you could give me ten million dollars to move anywhere tomorrow, and I would say, nope. So I just, you know, we're not throwing money away, I just would like to add that.
I'd just say, it's investing or reinvesting in the community, not only in these homes, but what I heard you say was, in the apprenticeship, it is difficult to find people, quality people in the trades in this community. And so if you are taking these individuals and helping teach them a trade, and hopefully they are staying in this community and working, you know, finding a plumber, finding an electrician, firing a policeman, firing a policeman. Yeah, so thank you for that part of it as well, thank you not just of the homes and looking at the one end that's not being met, but also taking it and your skills and teaching and passing that on.
Last thing I did, just want to add for a little bit of clarity, it's not a huge important thing to say, but just to raise it, the bill to Tumwa sent up to ten thousand dollars, fifty percent of that did come from the Legacy Foundation, so only fifty percent of that is directly coming from the taxpayer, other than the taxpayers sending up the Legacy Foundation from the public hospital, but the other part of that is that the, I'm almost positive, I want to double check, I believe the other portion of that did come from our American Rescue Plan funding, so it was federal money, taxpayer money is still, I think in this case it was federal money that did the rest of that program. So a little bit different context there, but just to make sure that we talk about that program in the future.
Zach, I don't know if maybe in the future you'd like to do like an update on how that program has been used and how it's improved our community. I think that would just be good to see the impact of that program.
Yeah, I think there's, I think that's good.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Mayor. Oh, I just want to stand up.
If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
No.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number eleven, twenty twenty-four, approving the transfer of funds through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as presented by the Finance Department. Recommendation passed and adopt Resolution number eleven, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Someone? Second.
Hey, Jessica?
Um, yes, so this is kind of the standard stuff, this, this resolution does have some operational support coming from the general fund going to Library Cemetery and Bridgeview Center, that is going to be just a semi-annual transfer. What this does not include is transfers in to the Debt Service Fund for the December first interest payments. We're still working through some of that and where that needs to come from, and trying to streamline a few things with our financial advisor. And so I do hope that we would have that at the next meeting to conduct that and get that done and tie it with the December first interest payment. And happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions for Jessica? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-four, adopting a fixed asset policy for the city of Tumwa, Iowa. Recommendation passed and adopt Resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a recommendation? Second. Okay, Jessica?
Yes, so when preparing for the audit, Sarah McGriff, our accountant, spent one entire week working on just fixed assets alone because that data had not come together in a cohesive way throughout fiscal year twenty-three. And so this policy, there were times with that too, when she was doing it about like, what do you consider a repair or maintenance? And when does, when does this happen? And other things where we didn't have anything in writing to go on other than essentially, I knew a policy that was really well-written, existed in Marshalltown that I referenced, and that's how we made decisions. And that's really what's here before you tonight, with just a few changes. And so it's putting into writing basically the process for what is a capital asset, how you depreciate a capital asset, and how this really gets recorded into our financial statements. So providing guidance to the Finance Department on how to do this internally, but also providing some other guidelines for how we get the information and finance that we need. And so this policy has requirements for any equipment purchases coming forward, that that staff summary needs to be turned into the Finance Department with any invoices or anything to be paid so that we know that it gets recorded, and that a new related processes for the disposition of any assets that are to be replaced. If those are not referenced in the staff summary of how they'll be replaced and establishing that link for finance to say, we know how much this was salvaged for, and was this an item that was wholly depreciated? What do we need to do with the salvage value or traded value? That that needs, if it's not the staff summary, it needs to come into the Finance Department in a separate sort of way so that we have accurate records being kept of where assets are coming and going throughout the year and not just trying to compile it at the very end of the year.
That sounds like a heck of a plan, really, very good.
How are you implementing it to the staff, like how are we ensuring that the staff understand and know the process?
Well, when you approve it, then that's when we will be rolling it out, so it's just another process. Sarah had already communicated internally with Kristen, who does accounts payable, to really start looking for these items as they're coming in and pulling them out so that they're getting to Sarah right away. The staff summary attached with an invoice is really going to be the thing that is the key. And so that also shows that it's gone through City Council for approval as well, if needed.
Also, does a lot of that comes through the department that you make sure that you train the department on this?
Yeah, it's very simple, we're trying to use the processes that are already in place for things to make sure that happens. Where it gets a little tricky is, you know, if you don't have a plan for, you know, selling, we do sell a lot of things on GovHR, or not GovHR, GovDeals. And GovDeals, then, you know, that might be a little bit longer process, but again, it's all about communicating when something's happening with the appropriate people in finance so that the whole picture can be put together.
And it's my understanding this is a policy that you have to implement in Marshalltown?
It was already in Marshalltown, yeah, so it was, it was one that was there, was very well-written and contained a lot of detail about getting rid of a lot of gray area and things that I feel like we encountered this year with the updating the FY twenty-three fixed assets.
Any other comments or questions for Jessica?
Is the new software potential that we'll be getting, is all this applicable to that, so it's, can follow through?
Yeah, so in the software RFP, we did request information on whether or not a company can provide a fixed asset module as part of their system, and I would say it is then not somebody necessarily having to do a lot of tracking. It's probably marking some things in the system when they come in that it's a fixed asset. And this also relates to insurance as well too, and so Kristen is really that point person for adding things to insurance policy. And so we've got the right point person, we just don't have the best software or things to make things happen. Everything's still very much paper than on paper.
Will someone be applying the estimated life of a new item coming in, so that we have an estimate for how long it'll last?
Um, yeah, so we typically, we apply things based on the policy, I don't have it in front of me, but I think we're, there are some standards that are set for what something is, that most equipment and vehicles, I think, is ten years or less. I think land is forever, and there's some areas in between, so, yeah, so that's spelled out in the policy. And then essentially with your software, you just set it up with the parameters that you have.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fourteen, twenty twenty-four, approving the purchase agreement between the city of Tumwa and Setman for a new fire apparatus. Recommendation passed and adopt Resolution number fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, and I believe our inner, our chief, Pat Short, is going to address this item.
Yeah, I think this is a matter of a continuation from the last house, maybe it's my understanding. I did look up some different factors with our truck that we're replacing in the last five years, that was just shy of thirty-four thousand dollars just in maintenance fees that we put into that truck. Along with that, there are still many, many things on this truck that does not work, and is not actually very safe. Other than that, this company was actually gracious enough to extend the same price for another two weeks. So if there's any questions, let me, glad to answer.
Just a point of clarification for the public, at the last meeting, the financing of it was approved by the City Council to go out to bonding. What we didn't have at the time was the actual purchase agreement, and so that is what is before you, it's a resolution to approve that purchase agreement for that apparatus that we were talking about, at the price that was mentioned at the last meeting. And so that's why it carried into this meeting is now we have first going to go along with the financing of it.
And you still anticipate you'll be able to get this environment around October twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Do you have maintenance records on each piece of equipment? So we know when something breaks, if it gets fixed or not, or if it could be fixed or not, and how it affects the use of the equipment?
Yes, the maintenance records are checked up every month, we get a report on our apparatuses.
Okay, apparatus is an interesting term, it's a fire truck, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-four, approving the professional services agreement between the city of Tumwa and Piper Sandler Company for professional services with respect to funding of phase-eight sewer separation projects through Division Four. Recommendation passed and adopt Resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Still moved, second.
Okay, Philip Burkmire is going to take this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This agreement will compensate Piper Sandler for their assistance to the city of Tumwa with respect to financing of our sewer separation projects. Some of the typical services provided are modeling, income expenditures, and cash flow. Some of the typical services provided are modeling income expenditures and cash flow, estimating tax, and sewer rate implications, proposing bond terms, coordinating closing of the transactions, preparing post-sale analysis for bond sales, and attending council meetings as required. This compensation is contingent on project budget and is due at closing of the SRF loan. Or in the case of the SRF loan is contemplated at the beginning, at the time of letting a construction project. There is no B for phase eight Division Two. So this will run from Division Three through Division Four. The, thereafter, the fee will be calculated at point zero one seven five percent of the project budget, the minimum per project of five thousand dollars. Each additional issue will incur a cost of two and a half thousand dollars for preparation, distribution, currently unveiling of the preliminary and final statements. So we have at last estimate about seventy million dollars worth of work to do to finish Phase Eight. They've helped us a little bit already trying to get Division Three started. Take rid of the SRF loan, that is about twelve million dollars. Should be seeing some information about that coming up the next few months. And then we got Phase Four, Five, and Six after that. Costs just keep going up and up and up. And they're going to try to help us finance this in a responsible manner and keep rates as low as we can for the sewer users.
So from the beginning of the sewer separation project, there's been no professional services agreement in place?
From what I was told, they kind of just done it pro bono before and just, you know, did it for free basically and uh, got their money in front of our, our bond issues. And don't know the exact circumstances of why they would do it for free for so long. But uh, he uh, expressed interest and uh, we had a formal agreement coming forward.
Counsel, have any questions for Phillip?
I had heard at one time that there was a water line crossing an area going into that project area. Do you know about that?
There's like a hop. Which, which is that project area?
Well, it was to the south of Bridgeview and going to the west, I believe.
Like in the parking lot area?
Could be. I'm asking if that's an issue.
Maybe you have.
Maybe I'm asking a question you can't answer.
I'm not sure what project you're talking about.
Okay, I'll get more information if you can.
Okay. Are you talking about the, the? I know there was issues about water lines over under the market street, like the parking lot by the Market Street Bridge? Is that what you're talking about?
I don't think so, but I'll, I'll get more information and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments to Phillip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavanis?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes, thank you.
Resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty four, approving amendment number one to the Destination Iowa Grant Award for the Atumwa Sports Complex. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Is there a recommendation? Second. I believe Phillip, you're going to handle this one?
Yes. Uh, so on May second of last year, the city council approved resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-three that authorized the city to join Southeast Iowa Sports Commission in an application for the Destination Iowa Grant as a co-applicant and co-recipient. That grant was awarded, uh, and since the time amendment has occurred, that amendment removes all references to compliance with two CFR two hundred, so uniform administrative requirements, cost principles, and all requirements of federal awards. All other federal and state laws, rules, and et cetera apply. The amendment requires the city to sign off recognizing acceptance. So I was notified by um, I, uh, the Iowa Economic Development Association uh, that informed us of this amendment. Uh, because we are co-applicants, uh, we are required to sign off on the amendment as well. Um, the uh, primary applicant Southeast Iowa Sports Commission has signed off on it. Uh, they were just waiting on us to sign off on it. Council had approved this initially, uh, and so that's why it's before you to approve of that amendment as well. It doesn't change anything with the cost of the project. Uh, maybe lowers it because some of the federal requirements of reporting aren't, uh, aren't necessary going forward.
Was the amendment necessary because of the type of project it is?
I, you know, I wasn't given the information as to why was that exactly necessary? If I think it just didn't meet the qualifications of some of the reporting requirements. And so the initial one had it in there and it's since been removed.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavanis?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen, twenty twenty four, authorizing the mayor to sign and submit an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation under the Revitalize Iowa's Sound Economy Rise Grant Program for improvements to Helgerson Flats and in funded to sign all contract-related documents. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number nineteen, twenty twenty four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phillip, I believe you're going to take this as well.
Yeah, I'm going to lead off and uh, Mark O'Grum, Greater Term Partners in Progress is here. Phil will start off and I'll turn over to Mark. Helgerson Flats.
I thought it was just because you missed us.
Coming back to visit, yeah. Helgerson. Helgerson Flats is designated as certified site in the state of Iowa. The destination places on a list of shovel-ready sites across the state. Although there has been interest in the site in the past, interested parties have expressed concern with access, specifically commercial vehicles to the site, semis. Working with GOPIP, uh, we've had conversations with Iowa DOT. Believe there are some short-term and long-term resolutions to the issue. State offers a grant program to assist with transportation-related barriers to economic development. The request would complete the application to the Rise program. That would provide funding to assist with constructing and improve public access to and from Helgerson Flats.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. So just to give you a little bit of background information, I know we've talked about this in the past, but um, for the public's knowledge, Helgerson Flats is a, a property owned by Greater Atumwa Partners in Progress and the Helgerson Trust in, in Atumwa. And it is one of twenty-three certified sites in the state of Iowa, which means it's prime for real estate. If somebody wanted to buy it, they could go there tomorrow and start building on it. We've had challenges in marketing that property over the past few years that has been a site-certified area. Primarily, the reason for that is there's no access to it to speak of, especially for fifty-three-foot trucks. And I'm sure everybody's been out to the industrial park and you've seen that, that only way into that area on Foxock Road is through the frontage road to uh, Atumwa Forty-Nine back into there. And then it comes to an abrupt end. We have uh, unfortunately, had several people that wanted to purchase the property, which means there's an opportunity cost there. We've lost jobs uh, to the community, we've lost property tax dollars to the community because we haven't been able to develop that site. The, the sole reason for that not being developable, developable is because of the access to the area. Now, going back historically, we have tried to have conversations with Iowa DOT in the past to help find resolution to this. But that really has not uh, been fruitful over the past few years. We have been lucky over the past few months and we've been able to break through with that and really get a meaningful conversation of Iowa DOT going, which is what brings us here tonight. We have the opportunity to apply for a Rise grant through the state of Iowa. And we, working with Phillip Erdmeyer, we've put together a draft proposal to the state to, in two different phases, one city, one county, to put together access to that area, which will allow us to be able to market that in the appropriate way that will get development out there. And it's important, two things to say. Number one, that we do have general agreement with the county supervisors to fit, to help us do the Rise grant application for that back portion. So we can complete the, the back access from uh, the DeLonga Road exit uh, to the Angler Road, which would ultimately connect to Helgerson Flats. The second thing I want to mention is we um, we have struggled with getting some of those folks in there. We do have people that have shown interest in this property. But ultimately, what happens with this Rise grant is going to determine whether we get development out there. This is uh, a unique property in the city of Atumwa. Ultimately, it will be in the city of Atumwa. Um, and the fact that Atumwa has no infill development for, for factories. Atumwa has no infill development area for uh, warehousing space. This is the only spot, so to speak, of this ready-to-go in Atumwa for economic development, for, for large-based manufacturing operations, for uh, large-based warehousing operations. So uh, I know the conversation earlier was talking about, you know, uh, having that private development come in. But here's a case where I urge the city council to really think about what the future of economic development looks like for the city of Atumwa. Because this is, this is really the gem that we have at our fingertips to really uh, take, take home the, the uh, jobs piece of this, the, the uh, really bring in money for property tax revenue in the future. And I guess with all of that rambling, I'll take any questions if anybody has.
Mark, how much land is in Helgerson Flats?
There's about seventy-seven point eight-two acres.
So would GOPIP write the, the Rise grant application, or would it be a joint effort between the city and the county?
So GOPIP is actually contracting the writing of that, that grant application. And obviously, we're working with Phil and Phil, uh, which kind of sounds like an office space maybe, but that's. But um, we're, we're working with them, and we are ultimately paying the bill for the, the grant writing.
Mark, excuse me, is there an agreement with the uh, potential ground owners to allow the city to annex that into the city?
It's a great question, Keith. Um, actually, to uh, secure the city funding of the, the uh, Rise grant, we will have to voluntarily annex uh, that property into the city. And Zach Simonson, uh, sorry, Zach Simonson and I have already started that conversation to uh, create a letter of intent to annex, assuming we would get the uh, grant application approved by the state.
Again, is there inquiry as to available water and sewer for that area?
So there are water and sewer lines that are already running out in that area.
Up to it, but they're not in it.
No, no, that would be part of the development agreement.
Right. Thank you.
So what I hear you saying is that if we want to continue to grow our community, like everyone has said, we need more jobs and we need more growth. This is um, probably one of the biggest ways to do that.
Yes, uh, you know, everything, and I, I know I'm just going to be repeating what Zach had already said earlier, but you know, this is one big circle of life here. Um, you know, we need, we need houses to get jobs, we need the jobs to get houses. Uh, we need the, we need the houses to get the workforce, we need the jobs to get the workforce. This is, all has a very symbiotic relationship and we need to be attacking all of these from uh, every angle that we can. And this is really a unique opportunity for the city of Atumwa because this is an opportunity for us to, to uh, build a new road that um, we're only going to pay twenty percent of, of the cost of that road. And um, with that comes the opportunity for us to market that land. We worked with Jeff Skolberg, with Vololo County Engineer. He did a model site plan for us, which really allows uh, the way it sits currently on that model site plan, about six or seven hundred thousand square foot uh, warehousing-type operations out there. So there's, there's a lot of potential out in that area. We just really need to take advantage of the opportunity that we have while we're working with Iowa DOT and, and make it happen.
Can I just have one final question too? I think it was maybe during the conversation of the apartments out in that area, right? That this road was um, kind of a barrier, there was a lot of traffic on it and it just caused a lot of concern to um, kind of some of the residents out there too. So potentially, this could help alleviate some of those concerns.
It could. Um, right now, there's, on that frontage road, there's roughly between, depending on any given day, we, we were looking between thirty and sixty heavy trucks that are going in and out of that area. That's not inclusive of like the DOT trucks because DOT actually has a stationary out there as well. So it does have the potential to eliminate some of that. And obviously, if there's new business coming out there and we're completing that frontage road off the backside, then that new traffic is going to be directed away. But some of the traffic will still exist, like the traffic between Dr. Pepper Snapple and Plastapack is still going to exist and, and the, the traffic is closest right there. So we're not going to eliminate that traffic. Any DOT traffic, perhaps even Max Fosse traffic won't be eliminated, but uh, but any new traffic would be diverted off of the backside in the end.
Thank you.
I think if I remember, Mark, the Oak Meadow Drive off of Rochester is designated as an access to the light industrial area?
It is, but none of the, none of the heavy trucks really utilize that, they're coming in off of the frontage.
Well, I live there.
Oh.
Yeah, they work that street, and I don't blame them. That other turn over there is a pretty hard turn to make.
It's tough, and, and I know the city of Atumwa did some work in the turning in there, but it's, it's still, the, there has to be a longer-term solution for that as well.
And I don't object to that traffic. I think it's, it was actually what the street was reconstructed for several years ago with seven inches of concrete and a nice wide street. So that as people can park on that street, you can also get trucks back and forth on that street. So I think it's great.
Cool.
Any other comments or questions for either Mark or Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Counsel member McIntyre?
Yes.
Counsel member Cavanis?
Yes.
Counsel member Basu?
Yes.
Counsel member Galloway?
Yes.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty four, authorizing the purchase and installation of public art and accepting the funding for the total cost of purchase and installation from the Atumwa Legacy Foundation. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Someone?
Second.
Zach?
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Uh, the City of Legacy Foundation has been working since twenty twenty-three on the West End Ignited Program, uh, which is set as an overarching goal, trying to identify opportunities to improve the West Second Gateway Corridor in Atumwa. Uh, a lot of folks that come into Atumwa for business, to visit Atumwa, they uh, enter the community that way. And it's not necessarily, or it wasn't necessarily uh, the best-looking part of our community. It's the Legacy Foundation had a goal of uh, doing some improvements, some cleanup in that area. And so far, all the work that's been done there has been at their cost. Uh, that's included some home improvement grants, which were entirely funded by the Legacy Foundation to homeowners uh, to do exterior improvements on their homes, uh, landscaping work, tree plantings. There was a cleanup day, uh, there was a new mural installed, uh, and some other things have gone on in that area uh, paid for by the Legacy Foundation. To continue that initiative, the Legacy Foundation has found a suitable sculpture for the public driveway at West Second, West Main, and Fearsen. Uh, and with this resolution, the city would purchase that art for seven thousand dollars and install it uh, for about three thousand dollars. And the Legacy Foundation would pay to the city the entire cost of the purchase and installation. Uh, the Arts Councils also agreed to clean and maintain the pieces needed. Uh, the Plan and Zoning Commission did review the project and its location and they recommended uh, that it be installed at the proposed location. And then uh, city engineers worked with Legacy Foundation to put together uh, where it can fit on that parcel. Uh, and uh, a photo of what the art will look like is also included here. There's also a bill of sale document. There will be added to the bill of sale before it's signed because the city should be tax exempt on this purchase, but everything else is, is the same.
Uh, the photo that's included of that potential piece of artwork is surrounded by weeds or things that don't look like they should be there. I presume the city will take care of that as well.
Uh, so that's, at its location in Musketeen, and I'm pretty sure that's actually intentionally landscaped to be the uh, uh, drought-resistant type grass that uh, landscape architects like so.
I apologize for my weed comment.
So we see, actually, I have a question. We see a bigger picture than would be like the photograph. Right, so we're not going to get the tall grass, we're just kidding. It's going to be lower where we put it. Uh, but uh, landscape architects and art designers these days really like that uh, that look. It might be weeds to some people, to other people, it's an ecological prairie restoration that has been also benefited not how we know. So.
It allows for peace and.
Uh, and this is a, a lightly used piece, it's been on display with temporary exhibit in Musketeen. Uh, and then uh, it'll go into our ownership. We will own it, uh, we'll have it in our insurance policy, but we won't do anything for the purchase, we won't do anything for installation. And because we'll own it, we'll have the ability, if our needs ever change, to relocate it somewhere else.
I just want to clarify too, so that um, the Arts Council, yes, we, uh, I also said on the Arts Council, we agree to, um, you know, like if it's vandalized, to clean and maintain it that way, but ha, should it be like run over um, by a driver or something, that, that would kick into the insurance?
Any other questions for Zach?
Um, I, I do have to state that I have to abstain from voting on this particular item uh, due to my previous involvement with the Legacy Foundation as the project coordinator for the West End Ignited Program. However, this is a wonderful initiative that pours back into our community, our community members in an area of our community that's been forgotten for some time. Um, and I know that this piece of artwork, although it's. that this piece of artwork, uh although it's not really costing the city in the end, it's, it is a piece that they have looked forward to in this initiative, so I, I would fully support this if I could vote on this item, so thank you, Zach.
I do think the folks at the Legacy Foundation definitely had to put in a good amount of work in order to find something that really does, you know, art's subjective how it looks, but in terms of the cost and everything, I think they did a really nice job finding something that's really suitable to the space in terms of size, um is appropriate for this type of project and they found it, I, I'm really surprised they got it, the price is seven thousand dollars, this is, you know, public art can get pretty expensive, it's very expensive, so.
Any other questions, comments?
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Same.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is where I ask that the public would like to address any items that are not on our agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd just like to give the city, uh I'm not a member, that the city Public Works Department, especially our snow removal efforts, they did an outstanding job, uh and I don't think we appreciate the hard work uh that went into the heavy snow and uh there's just no place to put some of that snow, but I think they should get a pat on the back for a great job and we need to recognize the hours they spent doing it.
Took the words from me.
They have worked around the block to try and get the snow cleared for these two peachy snowstorms, so I always think the public realizes how much effort and hard work that is, so I appreciate that comment.
I would also have the Parks Department for that too, um for plowing like the parks and the um city like parking lots and things like that.
And I'd like to ask a question if I may, Your Honor.
Sure.
It's always been confusing to me about downtown, where does the, where does the snow get put? The people that are responsible for shoveling their sidewalks have to push towards the street, but the people that scramble or move the snow in the street have to push it back up on the sidewalk because there isn't really much of anyplace else to go. Do we have any kind of thoughts about how we can work with the downtown people to assure them that they don't, don't have to have a, a plow come down there and open a space between the parking space and their business to cross it?
Well, you're right, there's really no place to put the snow downtown. Um what happens is once it's finally stopped snowing, we start picking it up. Um they were out on Church Street last night, they're moving downtown tonight, it just takes a lot of time. If you wanna see how much snow they've already moved, if you go under the bridge, you see a mountain of snow out there and what they've moved already, that's from the south side, north side's off the Gateway Drive, but it just, I mean, there's eight people plowing snow for three hundred and twenty lane miles of streets, so every plow driver has forty lane miles they has to plow. And we had those running twenty-four hours a day while it's snowing on the main routes and then, then they move to residential streets and then, once all those are cleared, they can move on to picking up snow, which is usually a nighttime operation. So we still have guys running twenty-four hours a day so they can pick up snow at night and the people will use the street during the day.
And Philip, you guys are down a few vehicles, aren't you?
Well, we have, we're supposed to have eight full-size plows and we have two spares. Um we're down to two spares, um we're down a third plow also, we borrowed one from Wase Water to get us by and we have a, a small truck on the downtown route versus the bigger plow like we normally do, so yeah, we're, I think we're down at least three plows right now.
I guess I just um say that too because, so not only are you down plows, but y'all are working twenty-four hours, um I saw y'all um bringing snow down yesterday, you still are, uh you're, that department's still doing a phenomenal job, um but I think it also goes to show that if we continue to wait and just repair and repair, eventually when we really need vehicles, um we're gonna be down plows or down uh fire trucks or down police vehicles or um.
Our super.
A plow at the um, the airport, so just clean that up there too.
And, and both of our skid steers are down too, so we're trying to beg, borrow and steal, not steal, but find, find some of the skid steer we can use to, to dig out streets, it's hard to clear out parking spaces with a huge front end or a rear skid steer for it and they're both broken.
So I have uh just a couple more questions if I may. Number one, do we have any property downtown where we can put snow uh to get rid of it from the streets on the main street and second street? Is there any place that we can go with that?
Yeah, the down, let's stop north of the bridge, north of the river usually goes off the Gateway Drive, we off across the tracks back there, we'll dump it back there.
How about that lot down on the corner of Green and Main Street that the city owns? Is, is that usable for that purpose? Do you know?
I don't think it would take very many dump trucks to fill that up and probably better off getting it away from the streets so the melt doesn't go back on the sidewalks and cause issues with the state.
And is there any ordinance for downtown businesses to clear their walkways? I know we have resident uh rules and regs to clean your walkways, but is there anything downtown that allows them or would encourage them to move snow off of their walkway?
I think the ordinance is the same for everybody, it's the property owner, it's multiple people, sidewalk here, whether it's a business or whether it's a, a house, the property owners are liable or required to clear the sidewalk in front of their, in front of their property.
At least within twenty-four hours.
I'm, so I think it's a state law, I can't, I can't, yeah, I think it's a state.
So having said that, can the downtown people push the snow out in the street or not? Where are they gonna put it?
I don't know, when there's this much snow, there's not enough room.
So uh in building code enforcement, we sometimes get this question a fair amount because we enforce the grass till the people call us with the snow. Uh my understanding is you're required to keep thirty-six inches clear, so there is maybe some room to not plow the entire sidewalk. Some of the main street folks are lucky and they can put it in uh where we have those bump outs or where we have more space now on the sidewalk, that's nice for accommodating that, I hope that's an okay use of those. Uh and then, you know, with property owners, it's a really, really hard thing to enforce clearing snow because it's hard for us to get out safely and inspect when it's not been cleared and then also, we get a complaint, we write a letter that says you were supposed to plow your snow, by the time you get it, the snow's melted. So it's a challenging issue on the enforcement side, it really comes down to personal responsibility and the fact that you're very liable if something gets hurt uh on that sidewalk.
I think these are a little bit of unusual circumstances too, I, I'm not sure we get two pieces of snow every day, but yeah, so I think these are unusual circumstances.
And it's supposed to warm up in the next few days too, so I think that'll allow other people to kinda get out there and.
It went up to one degree today.
I know, right? I think on Sunday it's supposed to be at thirty degrees, so.
So what are we doing, dreaming? Just kidding, warming up.
Oh.
So the other problem, part of the downtown, the, the residential is, we have several areas in our community, there are no sidewalks on one side of the street or the other, and I don't know how that ever happened because at one point, we had a rule that said, if you build a property, you will build a sidewalk. Maybe that was before the property was built, I don't know. But I do know that my wife got a really bad rap forty years ago when she petitioned the area where we lived to put in a sidewalk. And there wasn't any sidewalk on either side of the street, kids were walking in the street. And so ultimately, she was frowned upon by several people that had to put in a sidewalk on their property. But the bottom line is, it was a good thing. It was expensive for some people at the time, but it needs to happen. So we need to take a look at that and see who could be cooperative in adding sidewalks where there are none.
Wow.
Is there any other communications that the council wants to make tonight before we take a recess and go into our reception? I do wanna explain to the public that we are done now with our regular part of our city council meeting, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess and we're gonna go ahead and go over the items that we were gonna go over at last Tuesday's work session, it got canceled due to the weather, and I just wanna enforce or let everybody know this is a work session only, so there's no decisions being made tonight on any of these four agenda items that we're gonna be talking about during the work session. So let's go ahead and take a ten-minute recess and then we'll reconvene um at seven twenty. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene our city council meeting, we are going into the work session right now, I just wanted to reiterate again, the purpose of the work session is just for the council to receive information and for discussion purposes only, there'll be no decisions made on any of these items tonight, that's why it's called a work session instead of a regular council meeting. I'm also gonna go ahead and basically reverse the order of the items on here, uh take the ones that are gonna require maybe more discussion till the end. So we're gonna start with number four and work backwards and I believe Tom Monsiak wanted to speak to the council tonight regarding the item on our work session agenda regarding the mayoral term.
Good evening, council. As a previous member of the council, a mayor, um we spent a fair amount of time talking about changing the term because when I became mayor, the term was a two-year term and, and required an election every two years. Uh previous council decided after much thought and deliberation that uh the length of term should be the same as the council, so we did change it to a four-year term. Um and I think with some good reasons. When a mayor comes in in January, you're already halfway through the current year's budget, so you can't really have any impact on the budgetary process there. And as soon as you get started in the job, you have to start thinking about running for reelection. And so that takes time and energy away from the job. It also adds a fair amount of expense to the city when you have to con- conduct an election. Um I think the, the other thing, it doesn't give a, a mayor's position a chance to really concentrate on any long-range planning that should be one of the goals of the council because as we heard tonight, things like uh economic development, housing issues, art planning, uh all those kinds of things take a lot of time and energy and you just need time to understand the issue and, and work with the council, so again, I think uh I would really encourage you to give that some thought. Uh it also takes time for the mayor and the council to get a rhythm and to work together as, as a team because you should be a team that, that really drives the city and looks at what's in the long-term best interest of, of the citizenship. Um I think consistency is another issue I would bring up, that you wanna have a mayor and council consistent about long-range policy and planning, we heard Asia tonight about policies for a, a number of different things, I compliment Jessica in the long-range planning she's doing for the city and finances. Um I think there's just a lot of reasons to keep it a four-year term, so unless there are some things that I'm not thinking about, um I would encourage you, councilor, as you go through the process of reevaluating all the boards, commissions and positions, that you give that serious thought and not just do a knee-jerk reaction and say, change it back, it's only been in place uh one full term and uh part of another term and I think uh if, if there is something that comes out of this after a while, you can always change it again, but uh it's not been in place long enough to really have tested it to see if it works well, so I just wanted to share those thoughts with you and I'm sure you'll give much serious consideration, thank you.
Tom, is, am I correct in assuming that the council can by a resolution switch it back or forth any way they want to, anytime they want to?
Anytime they want to, uh the, the one issue is, is the council, it can't be done during that, that particular session.
Right.
So you couldn't change it this year, it has to be the next, uh after the next general election, so.
Correct. Thank you.
I would just echo what um Tom identified too, I think that there's um, well first off, you know, just having one and a half terms, like there are one full, four-year term and a half-year term, I think that we haven't really seen the full input of it or impact. Um I also think that it's important to, to just um consider um again that there's a flow, you know, so we are all very aware that we had a very green council and mayor and it took us a few years to really understand that flow and so I think that there's a benefit to, excuse me, thank you, um a benefit to having four years, so I would be in favor of remaining in, at four years at this point.
But I also just agree that a four-year term just makes sense, for two years, you're like, like Tom said, you're only concentrating on earning in your sort of long-range plans. I think the mayor has to be able to center on long-range plans, the mayor basically is the, the face of the city, you don't wanna be changing the face of the city every two years until Tom maybe like gets six fifty. Uh so I mean, I don't know what else to say, but I support the four-year term, I think it's, it's very impressive here to live for that position.
I agree on the four-year too, I think the only benefit you possibly would have with a two-year is maybe get more people to run, but other than that, I, I'm in favor of the four-year.
Oh yeah, I would also just like to add, as, as someone who is taking over a term, a two-year term, um it's daunting to have to get all of the things done in a shorter amount of time, so a four-year term is definitely more beneficial when you're working on policies and things that you're wanting to move forward with in the city. Um and also I would say, you know, if, if moving a term to two years makes it a job that is more um marketable to people, I suppose, um then maybe those aren't the people that should be running for mayor because it's, it's a four-year term job for a reason because things need to get done, um so I would also be in favor of keeping it for two years.
No, if I'd been a newly elected official myself, it takes you a few months to be acclimated to, I mean, a two-year term, you're spending a half your first year just getting acclimated to the job.
I would say it took me two years, I finally feel acclimated to the job.
No, but I didn't even process it.
Oh, my, I just.
I was not on the council at the time, but I was a person who encouraged the four-year term for the mayor and I guess I'm still hoping that the council won't change that, that it is a good measure for the mayor to come in, get his feet on the ground and move forward with the council to accomplish things as much as possible.
Anybody have any other comments?
No, just saying, the publication looks like, you know, our code ordinance says it's established as a four-year term, so would uh, a little bit more than the resolution require an ordinance change uh in the publication of that and everything, so uh if that is something that the council would like to consider, uh staff could just wrap up, you know, ordinance provision and, and take that up.
Okay, um the next item is uh discussion regarding the primary provisions for election proceedings.
Who's every direction at this point, one way or the other? It's a whole, I'd say, four years.
Your Honor, I would like to speak to the election term over there whenever it's ready.
Go ahead.
I think uh it is not required by law that we have a primary election in this city or in this county and it is uh expensive to have a primary, usually between ten and fifteen thousand dollars every time you have that. And if you look at the records, you'll find that the people that run the primary and win the primary usually are elected to the official job opening. So it seems like, we had one or two times, I guess, in the past where they had ten or four people that wanted to run one time and that could be considered. Uh there are two or three ways to do it, number one is you can, whoever the top vote hitters are, are elected instead of having the primary. The alternate method would be to have a runoff, Lord help us, we don't want that, but you could, it's legal by law. So I just think of something that we really need to take careful consideration to try to conserve dollars as much as possible and it's, when it's not required by law to have a primary, I think we should not have one.
I'd like to comment, I mean, I, I agree, I agree with what the council person, Cavaness, it is.
How, how is this?
I, I agree with the council, the council person, Cavaness, it is, it is kind of, I don't wanna say wasting money, but it is, it's a cost, so we don't need it to occur. Um you know, and like you said, how, it hasn't been very often where we've had a huge number of people run, um to add additional costs, I mean, I, I would just think we go by the top voters, you know, the runners runs and the top voter's getting it.
In short, I would say, I don't wanna bring this up to the mayor again.
Doug, can you talk? Me too.
Usually you don't want me to talk, no. I uh, I'm at Baker, I'm running the primary, I brought it up to talk to the mayor and the city administrator about it, so would, all the other reasons for um lack of percentage of vote.
So all the other reasons for lack of percentage of voting, the lack of people running, it just a wise decision to make to defer it.
Do you have any other comments about either keeping the primary or getting rid of it?
Well, I hope we put that on the agenda for the next regular meeting to eliminate the need for a primary.
I agree. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I think, yes, we could bring it to the agenda to continue the conversation and vote either way.
Vote on the agenda, that way the council has that time to speak about it.
Anything else, if anybody wants to talk about regarding election proceedings? If, the next thing, the city of the town of boards and commissions. I was the one that brought this up initially. Chris has done some research on legally what we can and can't change. And I think you've all been provided copies of that. But I was a little bit surprised, frankly, that none of our boards and commissions have any term limits. The length of terms ranges anywhere from two years up to seven years. There just doesn't seem to be much continuity or consistency. And I was hoping that we could kind of try and standardize some of that. I know civil service has some pretty strict guidelines that we have to follow per the code of Iowa. But when we did our research, there wasn't anything that indicated that the council couldn't go ahead and propose X number of terms that anybody can serve on any of these boards or commissions, and you could also decide the length of that term. So before we do get into that discussion, though, I haven't been able to talk to Councilman Cavendish yet, but I'd like to go through just real quickly all these different boards and commissions and make sure we're gonna have council representation on each one of them. So if you kind of are with me, I wanna run through these pretty quick. And if any of you want to go ahead and be considered, let me know. Currently, we don't have anybody on the airport advisory board. So does anybody want to take that on?
If no one else says, I will, if they don't.
I try and go to those meetings most of the time, but we still don't have a council representation.
The fourth Tuesday of the month.
It's at one, right?
At one o'clock. At the airport.
I'm going, I'll be on the seat.
Pardon?
I'll be on.
Got it? And then on the board of library trustees, if my understanding, the HOFFL would like to serve on that?
Yes.
And then on cemetery trustee, that Matt, you already have that, you wanna continue with that, Matt?
Yes.
And then civil service, we don't really have a council representative regularly on civil service, is somebody interested in that?
I would be.
Historic preservation commission, I believe Sienna had indicated to me that she'd like to serve on that?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that? And then human rights commission, Sienna had also indicated an interest in serving on human rights, is that okay with everybody? The way we set the human rights up commission last year, it's still a, it's a issue of members, but we're gonna have the council just have one-year terms, so that all the different council could rotate on that, human rights commission, if they have an interest in doing so. So that'll continue to change every year, the council slot on that commission is just for one year. Inspection board of review, we have nobody on the council for that. Anybody interested in that?
What are the meetings?
The meetings are as needed, and they haven't met in over five years.
I would take that one, but they would be a little more often than their.
They only meet when we receive a formal appeal of a decision of a building inspector, and we haven't received any such appeals. They don't have any other business they do, their only function is to review those appeals.
I assume that's a good thing.
I would take that one personally, yeah, I mean, if they more, just to learn more about what I see. But that's okay with me.
That's fine. The town hall housing authority, I've tried to go to a couple of their meetings, but here we don't. We haven't had heard their council person. Many town hall housing authorities, they meet monthly down at the housing office during that, the daytime.
The inspection board of.
No, often. So is anybody interested in the town hall housing authority board?
I can, due to, that doesn't work on the schedule, please, the board.
Okay. Town hall public safety advisory committee, they meet quarterly. That was a committee that was reinstated this last fall.
I would do that, mayor.
They only meet quarterly. The parks advisory board, we don't have a council representative on the parks advisory board.
I would do that, your honor.
Keith?
Yes.
Planning and zoning, we don't have anybody designated for that, neither. Anybody interested in planning and zoning? They meet the first Monday of each month at seven o'clock at City Hall, I believe, at Chair's App.
They meet at six now.
Six?
Yeah. First Monday.
Yeah. Anybody?
Evening, morning.
Evening.
Hey.
If you choose to sit at six, I'll leave it there by yourself.
I'd sit down on that one, your honor.
The waterworks board of trustees, the HOFFL had indicated an interest in serving on that, anybody else, or you okay with Bill taking that one?
I would be an alternate to that if Bill was not available.
Okay. And then the final one is zoning board adjustment. They meet the second Wednesday of each month at eleven a.m. at City Hall.
I could do that.
Since we didn't have our work session last week, my plan was to have this on the consent agenda for our city council meeting tonight, but we needed to have the discussion first to see if everybody wanted to do so. We'll go ahead and put this in the consent agenda for council to approve these appointments at the next council meeting. Chris, do you, would you mind leading us kind of through the discussion on that document that you passed out on the different boards and commissions? Here, here, here.
So this actually came from legal. Christine Stone put all of this together. And what she did is she looked through Iowa code and the restrictions that we have for each of our boards and commissions as addressed in Iowa code.
So. If you just take each one of them.
Yeah, I would say you would just wanna go through each one and decide if you want to change anything.
I just wanna make a comment prior, before you read all this.
Yeah, I can't take minutes to read a single word.
What were you gonna say?
I guess I would just say, I mean, I think that having term limits is important because it allows for different ideas and growth and conversation. However, and I say this as a big however, we also struggle to get some of these positions or these seats filled. I mean, you can look at that list that you gave us, and we have vacant spots. So I guess I move forward with trepidation that how are we as a council, as staff, how are we going to better, better market these positions to get people involved too?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because Travis is doing a better job now that Travis is on board with, with mentioning to the public who, where we have vacancies, and we've not had as much problem getting people filled on these boards as we have had in the past two years. You do have to do a lot of marketing and a lot of notification and talking to people, but I think that shouldn't be necessarily the reason why we shouldn't go ahead and have some kind of term limits. And like I said, the length of terms just varies all over the board, from two years to seven years. And it'd just be nice to get some consistency and continuity on some of these where I think we can. But I agree, you need to market, and Travis has been working with me, and we've done, I think, a pretty good job of putting out to the public on a regular basis, because the public doesn't always check our website. Those vacancies are posted on the city's website, but you don't want people to go on the city website. So we are trying to get more concentrated effort, and I appreciate Travis's help in putting the word out there about where we do have vacancies. And I try and bring it up periodically when I go to different venues in the community as well.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate it. I mean, I commend Travis on what he does too, because for the youth council, we have ten applications, which is huge and exciting, and youth city council. So I just wanna make sure before we like go through and set term limits, that we truly have a plan to ensure that these are filled. So I don't want anything to be left unalert. That's it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
I have a question regarding serving on any of these commissions, including the waterworks. The old rules and rates kind of said you had to be in the city to serve on them. I'm not sure that that's necessary in today's world.
A couple of them do. Couple of them require, most of them do not.
Okay.
The waterworks is one currently that says you have to live in the city limits of the town hall to be on the waterworks board of trustees. That's one of the few that specifically spells out that you have to live in the city limits of the town hall if the council decides to change that.
But it is changeable by the council if they choose to do that, is that what you just said?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Civil service does not allow that.
Not civil service, we're talking about the waterworks board.
Correct. Civil service, in order to be on the civil service, and you would be an ex-facto on civil service, you must live.
Would you talk into your microphone, I can't hear you.
Yeah. In Iowa code four hundred, it does say that civil service, in order to be a commissioner on a civil service commission, you must live within the city.
So the waterworks, is it a civil service commission?
No.
No, not.
I'm saying just for the civil service commission.
Okay, all right, thank you. So do you wanna make any, I mean, we can't vote on anything tonight, we're just making recommendations. Do you wanna make, do you wanna have any term limits at all for any of these? Because to me, if you're gonna have term limits, that would be the same term limits for all the boards and commissions, like a three-year, three, three, you know, like a three-term limit or a four-term limit. Are you guys willing to look at making term limits on all these boards and commissions, or you wanna leave it open-ended like is that?
So let me just, for clarification, what we'll be doing tonight is discussing this and going through that.
Right.
Any of the changes that we're looking at here, or all these that are outlined in our code ordinances, we'd be looking at provising, you know, so right now there aren't any term limits. We'd be adding in a provision that says whatever the term is, no more than X amount of terms before you get off. Staff then would work with legal council to draft up an ordinance for the council to take official action on. So what you're talking about tonight will just be giving us the direction, how we want that to look, right?
I think if we're talking about, I wouldn't mind seeing it on the agenda for discussion at least.
I agree, I agree, I mean, I think term limits and how much terms is a good way to go. Like it keeps people from becoming stagnant in an organization.
And that's, that's what the work session is for, is to have a discussion, draft up something for the official action, and then you can have further discussion and the public can weigh in on their thoughts on that. So we are having a discussion right now.
So what a term, is it, I can't, again, I know it kind of varies, but two years? I think that's when I'm around the historic preservation, I was there for two years and then reevaluated.
Some are two years, some are different lengths.
Would be nice if they were consistent as well, like four-year terms, or, I mean, whether maybe two-year.
I personally think that would make less sense too.
Again, just like the road half, there's civil service that requires four years. Yeah, so again, Iowa state clothing, so if you wanna make it consistent.
Well, I agree, four-year terms would be fine. And if there were some boards we had to make a special determination on, then that's just what we gotta do. However, you know, we can get ninety percent in line and just deal with what we have to.
As similar as EBA, it has to be five years.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, is, I think the mayor, we're just talking about, you know, getting it as consistent as we can.
So outside of the specific statute where requirements of any particular boards and commissions, or even that don't have any little rules outlined, is there a number of years?
I would say a four-year term with two terms, and then a third term could be considered if we don't have any new applicants.
I agree.
Four-year terms with a two-term limit with a third year consideration if we don't have applicants.
And I think that the current regulation for waterworks board of directors is six years appointed by the mayor. If that's a wrong term, or too long, or too short, we need to discuss that at least.
Yeah, six-year terms.
Yeah.
And that's not in code, so I guess I would just say, it could follow, like, again, I would just say four-year terms, two terms, and then a third if there aren't applications.
I agree.
I guess, I guess the next step from that, then, too, would also be to consider, those who are already sitting on those boards, do we consider it as part of their term? Or are they all starting fresh with the new term limits that we provide?
They start fresh with the new term limits and get put in place.
Okay. Also, then keep in mind that for every board or commission, every four years, possibly we could have new members.
You would, I would say we would.
In stagering, in stagering. Otherwise, you'd run into that thing where you could have, we got, same time.
That's what we did with the historic preso, or human rights commission, we staggered the terms.
So would that be, like, it's.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Oh, great, perfect.
What about residency?
I mean, I'll be one that I, I, I was one that pushed for the human rights commission to include Waukato County members, Waukato County, like, outside of the city limits, because again, it's just not the city people who are affected by that. But I also understand that there's, like, Waukato County has their own boards and commissions too. But I think it's something to consider and discuss if appropriate.
I believe too, Waukato County, people who live in Waukato County are so dedicated to them, I mean, they're still citizens of the community, so they have just as much skin and name as we do.
I think it's good that we have a human rights commission, but the code of Iowa says that if you pass, if you have, the city has a population twenty-nine thousand, you are required to have a human rights commission. So we're ahead of the game, I haven't one already. But if it were twenty-nine thousand, the population city in large, you aren't required in Iowa to have a human rights commission. Unless it stipulates a three-member or a five-member or a seven-member, I think we have zoning, I think they have seven members.
Nine.
Nine. So if other than those three that require a certain number, do you wanna talk about a standardized number for the rest of it? Because it's all across the board.
How many members they should have.
Well, that's one. Oh, you asked, I thought you were talking about the year.
So does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'm just looking, I, I mean, I'm looking outside of the human, or, sorry, it looks like we have consistently like five.
Summer three, summer five, summer nine, one, seven.
But what I'm saying is, like, when you look at it, there's consistently like around five is what we can bring without, or six, I guess, or five, people without like a vacancy. So I think that's something to think about, but.
And you usually want a odd number, so even in a voting situation. So as a rule of thumb, are you comfortable with saying five members unless it specifically requires by code a certain number other than five? Is everybody agreeable with that?
I agree with that, it's prior to even ask, I, I just wanna understand, so if we would put this on the agenda and talk about it, if we went to five, I wouldn't want some of the members to be taken off until their term expires, so they would be able to fill out their term, correct?
Yeah, correct. And there's two or three that have a specific requirement for how many they have to add, and that wouldn't change. Like civil service, zoning, zoning, they had one, there was one that stipulated a certain number.
There's three of them. Well, yeah, I'm trying to, because even if there wasn't one, you know, if there was seven, you would at least like, yeah, finish out the.
Yeah, because human rights has nine, so I mean, nobody's, the role of this isn't to take anybody off.
Right, right.
You're almost saying purpose for nine for human rights, because, go ahead.
Well, say the purpose was, he had the three-year terms, and three people, three year, so staggered, so that would have to throw that off, so. Well, say the purpose was, he had the three year terms, and three people, three zero, so staggered, so that would kind of throw that off, so if you're going to five, I guess it wouldn't necessarily matter.
There's a lot of them are five already, but then there are some that are less than that, some that are more than that. So if it doesn't stipulate a certain number, you're okay with saying five would be the regular number? And then my fellow said the residency, do you want to require people to live in the city limits to serve on these boards and commissions? Right now, the Atoma Water Works Board says you have to live in the city limits of Atoma. And we've got one person on there, but technically these would be taken off if that stays in effect. Because that didn't get caught a few years ago when he moved outside the city limits of Atoma.
I think that should be changed, I don't see where you have to live in the city, just to be on the waterworks board.
I would say, as long as it's not required, I mean, code, again, you have people that, um, are, uh, live outside, but they are someone's, and I think that's something to assess.
I believe that was the only one that specifically required that you have to live within the city limits. But civil service did not require that they have to live in the city limits too. So the waterworks board and civil service requires that you have to live in the city limits of Atoma, the way they're written right now, but the waterworks, what I think could be changed, but I don't think you can change the civil service.
Um, I think we need to get some more clarification from attorney on his heart preservation.
I was going to say, that one specifies the city.
It specifies people being from the district. I don't know what that means, because we also, we, if we would have five, we have, we could potentially add districts in the future, and then we would potentially, we'd need more than five. We also currently have people who don't necessarily live in the districts, uh, but have other.
Like business in the districts, so too?
Yeah, we have people that have good own property in some of the commercial districts instead of living in the residential districts. So we are required to have to approve somebody from the residential districts as well, which is a challenge.
Mr. Mayor, the other one I would think you might want to get some thought to would be the airport commission. Uh, I think that's a key position, and I would hope that would not be limited to just the city. No, it's not. There's people on it now that live outside the city limits.
And actually, that property is, it belongs to the city as well.
There also might be commissions though, and I think zoning board, or planning zoning commission, which, if we were to extend, our zoning authority would be required to have members outside the county, or outside of the county, we already do, but there might be commissions where you'd want to set max, or a maximum on the number of people who would be from outside of the city. If you had a majority of people that live in the county making decisions about a planning project in the city, I'd see that made.
Doesn't the county have to have their own planning and zoning commission of some kind?
I would imagine.
I think they have to.
I can see that.
Because I agree, you would want a bunch of people up in the county making all the decisions for people inside the city somewhere.
Right, we have a couple, and we could be required to attract extra people, authority outside the city limits, if we're allowed to do, if you're required to have a certain number that are from outside of the city. We don't do that.
There might be some distinction there, where planning zone has some authority, and you have a number of these other ones, like the airport works, et cetera, that are advisory in nature. Uh, so there, whether they live in the county or the city, isn't that as critical? Uh, that might be something to consider as far as differentiation as well.
I don't know if we're going to be able to get this all worked out tonight. It sounds like, you know, we talked about each board, or commission, it's like, there's a little concern here, or what about this? So it's almost like maybe we have to have conversations with each of these, um, also to understand and learn more too.
Once, once the board makes their recommendations, this is going to be shared with legal counsel again to make sure that it's consistent with the code of Iowa.
Yeah, and I, and I get that too, but when I, I guess what I'm saying is, is, uh, is there a reason to rush it? Is there, can we continue to learn more and like just have further conversations? I mean, it's getting close to eight o'clock too, and I just think that, that I just don't want to rush into anything, and then we, we've changed everything, and then been like, oh, why didn't we do this? Or we made this exception. Um, because I, I guess I would also argue when we go back to this, um, and I think that, uh, when Mark was part of the council, this was one of the things that he had invited, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I'm going to call you out right now too. That there's some people who have been serving, I, I mean, I'm looking five terms, three terms. So maybe those are the people that we look, we talked about starting fresh, or maybe those terms are the ones that we look at, like, okay, you're going to serve, but that's a staggered term too. I just don't want us to like rush into this, make all these decisions tonight, and then we bring it back to the commission, and they're like, wait a second, you forgot about this, or you forgot about that, like I just, I guess, I, I feel like we might miss something.
So what, what I see tonight is getting the guidance on the handful of things we're talking about here. Enough to get us a draft that we'll have another work session with something after in front of you, and then you can start to, you know, you'll have something that you're looking at in visual and saying, okay, that doesn't make sense with this commission, this should be that way. So you'll have something, but at least it's given us the, the framework for putting that together.
And we'll send notice to all the commissions so that they can come and if they have questions or comments, or invite, you know, again, some people have been on for fif, for five years, or not five years, five terms, so what's that, fifteen years, twenty years? Right, if there are four years?
What's the term length?
Oh, thanks, sorry, fifteen. So there might be some information that they have that we don't, so. Just something I think to think about too, is that input from everyone is important.
I agree with that, and I think that, uh, irregardless of what we decide, iron clad, those commissions would say, this person has done a good job, I don't see why you need to kick them off just because you changed the rule. So I think there's room for movement there.
And I don't think that was at least my intention, kicking anybody off, like Cyan said, once, whatever gets adopted, you go forward from that point, you would not have to start taking people off, you would just put them into the new rotation whenever it gets decided. If that, if you're willing to continue to be on, you know.
Mark, if, if I can. So when this actually first got brought up, there were people from different boards that had approached me about this, this particular subject, especially in regard to, um, the term limits, and one of the concerns that was had by a couple of different board members from different boards was the fact that there were members of those commissions or boards that had been on for long periods of time, but they were keep getting reelected either from fear for something from that particular board member, or there was a fear that they wouldn't be able to find a replacement for that person. So I guess where my concern is, is just, you know, starting fresh, we have the person who's been on there for five terms, well, if we put in another two term limit, that person has the ability to sit in there for another, uh, if we're doing four year terms, they haven't the ability to sit in there for another eight years if, if nobody changes it. So I guess from a public perspective, if we're going to do that, then we're setting ourselves up to not really have any effective change in this policy for the next eight years, because we're saying, okay, we're going to make this rule, but you guys are starting from ground zero, and we're just starting fresh, and that really doesn't make sense. So if we're going to do that, we really should just invite the conversation in eight years instead of inviting the conversation now, because it really doesn't do anything to affect change within those boards and commissions at this time. So I guess that's all that.
I think we also have to look at, uh, consecutive terms or just terms in general, because I'm, and then if we are going to look at terms in general, we have to go back and revisit this list, because Molly Myers Norman says one term on his heart preservation, but she previously served at least three hundred terms. She just took a break.
Now, I just, I just think whenever we come up with a standard of what we got now, because it's pretty open ended, there's very few rules and regulations on most of these boards and commissions, so as far as anything you guys decide to do is going to be valued and to make it better than what it is right now, it gets across the board. It's half a dozen of this, half a dozen of that.
Zach and I both have people on our boards that have been on for over thirty years, I mean, we had some people that have been on a long time.
And you don't usually see that, most of the time, with people saying, I'm not long. And I do think we are doing a more aggressive, better job of inviting new people to serve, and I've even had people ask me, well, I've contacted people that are interested in appointing that to board a commission, that, that's some of the questions that they ask me, well, how many terms can you have, what's the length of the term? And I said to them, so we're at, no, we don't have any guidelines, and we don't have any rules and regulations, so a lot of that, and we just had to see that value really down on that. So I think we need to get something in place, and it's just like anything else that the council does, whenever you decide this time around, it can change down the road. This isn't set in stone forever. But I think we really do need to kind of standardize someone if we can, because I think it will make recruiting and stuff a lot better too.
Well, when you're trying to gain talent too, when you're trying to get talent, if, if they ask, well, what's the term limits, what's this, and we don't have an answer, then we're probably not going to get that talent, because they're going to realize, well, I'm not going to do it if you guys don't have it straight, you know?
Yeah, I would also push, um, I mean, I, I know I've already pushed for youth city council, we got that, but I would also push for, um, youth member, or youth positions too. I mean, I know historic preservation has an ongoing new position, human rights also, but I just think that there's a lot of growth that can occur for that too, in that sense.
Each board can almost have a mentor, a youth group.
Yeah, but I guess I would, um, just move that, I think that more conversation needs to be done too, and I want to make sure that, um, department head town, um, have a voice in that too, so, because maybe they have an idea of what they would write their permission to look like, especially if we're opening it up.
So does anybody have any general thoughts, other than civil service? Do you have any general thoughts about, do you want commissions and boards to have a requirement, or they have to be in the city limits, or they just have to be resident in Waukato County? Because right now, we're not in compliance with the waterworks board of trustees, which requires that everybody has, well, they live in the city limits of Atoma. So we need to get something decided on that, or else it's one person needs to come off, and I've kind of held up on doing that, till I saw what you guys were going to do with potential changes.
I agree with that.
They have to be resident in Waukato County?
So does that need to come on for the city of Elven, can be on the local board? And H M C?
If they're already serving on another municipal, I would think that would exempt them from serving on our boards.
If that general consent is at least for the draft that you guys are going to get to take a look at?
Yes.
But if they are, and they're serving for their municipality, that exempts them serving on the boards?
And I think that too, um, to Zach's point also, that certain boards, maybe we have one or one position, or one spot or two spots for people not in the city, just to ensure that, um, people living in the city are also making the decisions for, um, the city, the big ones.
Those were the main areas that I thought we needed to get some direction from the council, and also that the staff could put together like those, uh, a draft proposal to take a look at, because once you have something in front of you, it can get a little bit easier to respond to it. So does anybody else have any other comments you want to make on boards or commissions?
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
We've got, uh, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, we covered it all.
We've got fire code.
Oh, yeah, I'd fire that code.
I mean, I guess, I guess I would just push this up, um, I mean, I am hoping that we're going to have a lengthy, great conversation on fire code, so, um, uh, that's going to really push direction, so. Are we ready for it, and, or can we get it all done tonight?
I guess that's up to you.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we're going to, everyone is willing to have the conversation and not ready to go to bed, so.
Well, the chief's been sitting there all night, we might as well let it speak.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, your last item on our work session is, uh, city's fire protection and prevention code, it's in the twenty twenty-one international fire code. So I'll turn it over to dinner and fire chief, Pat Short.
I was asked to look into, you have to make the amendment back into the fire code for the sprinkler systems for, at all due to downtown buildings. In doing so, I first started researching by looking at what we have for initial response to other buildings downtown, any amount of time that that would take. Um, after that, I contacted a lot of our sister cities, talking to their fire chiefs, inspectors, or investigators. Uh, there was three of them that did allow exceptions to the, uh, to the code for the, the, uh, sprinklers. Uh, I think it's important to realize that all the ones that allowed it were under the two thousand twelve, or the two thousand fifteen fire code. There was only two of considerable sized, uh, cities that were under the two thousand twenty-one fire code, besides the Atoma.
What was that number, make that?
Two. And both of them were, were allowing no amendments to it. In talking to the investigators, the inspectors, the cities that have them currently, most of them said that they would not recommend it moving forward when they adopt new fire codes. With the information I've gotten to this point, I could not support making the amendment to the fire code.
So your thoughts, are you going to keep it to twenty twenty-one that they approved last year? There requires?
Yes.
A sprinkler system.
Well, even if you went back to two thousand fifteen, that code actually still says the same thing, but they put the amendment in.
Even with existing buildings?
Because once you start modifying the building, then it changes.
Well, I understand modification or an upgrade in the building, but how about somebody that owns a building that's not doing any upgrade or improvement?
No, if, if, if you've done anything to the building, then no, you do not have to update them.
Thank you.
But if the work's already been done, you don't change anything your grandfather did, right? You don't have to comply with these new regulations if you've already got.
It did, was before the code was put in place.
Yeah.
I'm also embarrassed to be honest.
Go ahead, Zach.
So I guess I did do a little bit of work on the building code side and also looking at planning development. Unfortunately, came down, I have a different opinion, I guess a little bit from the chief. Uh, life safety is the most important part of everything we do, uh, but I do think there's a balancing thing that applies. Uh, metaphor I was using this week was, you can build an entire airplane on the same thing as the black box, but then it's too heavy to fly, and we have to be able to get some projects done. Uh, I think it's the same thing with buildings, you can add and add and add safety features to the point where it's too expensive to complete, uh, the rerotation. And it's one thing to talk about a brand new building and the features you need to have in it, but when you're talking about rehab to an existing building that's currently vacant, the test is a little bit different, because the least safe condition for that building is being vacant. Being open to squatters, nobody checking on what's going there, nobody to call the fire department when a fire starts, and I think the most urgent priority is to get the buildings occupied, uh, more than it is to install the systems. I think that we had a little bit of a conversation about what an amendment could look like. I thought it was a good conversation, uh, I do think there could be room to have an amendment that could be added with. The only other thing I would add is if we do go forward without making an exception, there are a couple of things we have to consider. We're going to be looking at an updated residential building code next year, or in this coming year. Uh, and so, uh, with that, the twenty twenty-one building code and further back, requires sprinklers for single family duplex. And so we'll have to decide whether we're going to do an amendment to that, or we're going to start requiring single family duplex homes to have sprinkler systems, in which case we'll be pretty much on it. There aren't very many other Iowa communities that require that, uh, and we make it really hard to build. Um, and then, uh, uh, this has also come from Main Street a little bit, they do see, uh, the added barrier coming from the sprinklers, uh, and they've asked that if there is going to be no change to the code, that we would consider some kind of incentive that's going to help with projects to, uh, to get a sprinkler system in. I don't know what that would look like yet, but if it was, uh, sort of, I guess, coming from staff, we'd want to ask whether that's something we would consider adding to the incentives we have for downtown development, if we are going to stick with having that. Uh, and then, just to raise this, there's nothing we can do about waterworks fees, but I don't know if we want to uh, put in a kind of request to have a review, the waterworks does charge a monthly fee to anyone who has a sprinkler system, which depending on the size of the line, can get up a hundred dollars or more a month. Uh, and so, you know, it's not just a one-time installation, it's a lot of continuing ongoing expenses. expenses to the system.
Well, and Zach, before you sit down, you kind of mentioned that we did have that conversation before, that I also thought was a big conversation. Can you kind of talk, maybe in your notes, but kind of talk about some of those safety features that was just, that were discussed during the meeting?
So I know that we had talked about, um, using firewalls, um, use of building materials that are rated to create fire separation for kind of different uses. Uh, we do already require that, we talked about making sure there were multiple means of egress, or anything that's going to be exempted out, we talked about uses that would never be exempted out. I do think that, uh, more than two, or at least maybe more than three apartments in the same building is probably, should trigger the sprinkler system, third floor should probably trigger the sprinkler system, uh, as it does now, I think, uh, you know, those were the kind of things we thought. But I think, too, uh, there's a lot of value in trying to, uh, make sure that my department and the fire department come together and be consistent on it. Right now, I think we do kind of have a different view, but I think we do need to kind of, find some way to force everybody on the same page, so if we do write an amendment, it's enough that everybody doesn't feel uncomfortable.
And in, and some of my research, too, and which was also discussed during our meeting, I think one of them, one community, but there's some other research that I've done, um, that some of those communities that do require, um, the sprinklers do have an incentive programs to assist in getting, or to assist in getting sprinklers in, um, so that we can continue to, um, follow that, you know, fire code, but then it's not all going on the, um, just, it's kind of that incentive, like, continue to grow with us, um, we're going to help with that, uh, that sprinkler, because it's, um, extremely expensive, and, um...
And I don't have those cities that funded those kind of incentives, they're required, that they're offering incentives to help people put in sprinkler systems?
No, I don't. I know I put an email, and I never received one, was it, I must say, not 15, um, I don't remember.
I think 15 recently did a program.
Yeah, okay. So I did put an email out, and I didn't receive a response, so, I mean, I'll computer that.
The other thing, I guess, that has had some discussion, and I don't totally understand the implication of yet, is with the downtown streetscape, we built that streetscape with the plan that we would have the adequate water service to all the three-story buildings to have the sprinkler system that they would need under code, this was the time then. We didn't do that in the two-story buildings, so, uh, I don't know what is involved there. I imagine we have plenty of water to get to those buildings, I imagine the water pipe under Main Street is sufficient size, but we will have to potentially rip out sidewalks and things in order to give water services to buildings that we're going to be requiring, uh, a fire line to those buildings as well.
Having served on the water board, I can tell you that, uh, anytime we expand sprinkler systems in the city, it requires them to have water available for all that to function. And we are currently making between five and six million gallons a day in water, and we do not have enough storage in our community to, well, we need to talk to the water works about what would be required if we start asking people to put in sprinkler systems. Now, the existing buildings and those that are under code right now, we, uh, the waterworks is, is geared for that, but when you start asking for lots and lots more water, um, it takes a little effort, and they beg to figure out where they're going to store it at.
So Ken, just for clarification for being in the public, this 2021 policy that the council approved last summer, what does it really mandate? Just so people know, what are we currently under right now? Everything has to be sprinkled?
Yes, pretty much.
New construction. New construction.
Or changes to buildings.
Remodels, changes of use and remodels.
Remodels, yeah, okay.
And that goes back to several other versions of the fire code. The only thing that was different in that when, in the change to the 2021, this amendment was also eliminated, and that's what caused this change in sprinkling from the two-story, from the three-story to have a two-story, um, and in the future with residential changes, it sounds like new residential homes as well, if there isn't some amendment put in place.
Right, we look at the, uh, if we're going to adopt the 2021 International Residential Code with no amendments on sprinklers, we have to require, unless the legislature were to preempt that, which they've done in 20 some states.
Sure. As far as the single-family home, I did start researching some of that, and there's, I did start researching that about the single-family homes. Most cities are making exceptions to that, including the other ones that are under the 2021, to a certain square footage. There are cities saying either five thousand per acre, or even, one city said eight thousand or more, which I don't know who's plugging eight thousand more for eight thousand or four hundred. So it's more than the normal fare, so they are as big amendments made to the new single-family homes.
I'd like to make a few comments. It's a sensitive area for us as council members, because ultimately, we have a negative vote, for everyone else is still going to have an opinion. So, if by chance, how it reads now, how it could read later, how it read before, the odds of downtown burning and someone burning that fire is probably pretty low. But me as a council member, unless I get more information that the state would, would help out in certain areas, or have a grant to help with the sprinkler system, if someone were to die in a fire there, and nothing against you guys personally, you guys still just had an opinion, me as a council member, I've got to live with that the rest of my life. I don't always agree with the state codes, but if, if it says in the code that we need to have a sprinkler system, then we need to have a sprinkler system. We need to really look at our heart and say, why do we want to change it back? And all I've heard so far, this particular meeting and meeting before, ninety-five percent of it was the money, a very small pretending that we're talking about someone could die in a fire.
I guess I would push back on that, um, because I think that Fred came in, Fred Sutcliffe or what, we interviewed somewhere, and talked, and the notes are in a packet, too, and talked about the, um, vacant buildings. And as Zach just pointed out again, that when we have vacant buildings, we expose that more to the elements. So we have squatters, we have, I mean, let's be honest, um, some of these vacant buildings also have drugs in them, you know, drug becomes roundhouses, and, I mean, and I, I just think that, um, so it's not just about the money, and I understand where you're coming from about that, too, but I think it also comes down to, I mean, we're not just talking about Main Street. I just want to clarify that, too, this has been something about Main Street, too, but we also have, uh, I think it's more, but Church Street, and, uh, some other buildings, too, that, uh, we're talking about. But when we do have these vacant buildings, and, uh, I think that we are increasing chances of fires in those, too, and then, I think that would study also with those, if we have fires in those, too, so.
Well, I think there's also, this isn't trying to be too argumentative, there's also just the, the money is safety. Our business is providing help of safety, and our increased valuation is how we, uh, keep our police force, keep our fire department, keep our plows on the road. There, there's definitely, uh, a lot of factors at play there. It, it's a, it's a tough thing for us to think about, and we have had a lot of challenge to go back and forth on it, but, uh, I don't, I don't like being on a different page than Pat on this, and I want to square it, but...
I, I think we asked you to go on a different page, however, right, and you want to, when you look at fire code experts, put those fire codes together with statistics from all over the US, I mean, people who are experts in their fields, and I think we all look at like, oh, it might not happen, but what if it does? So even if the building is vacant, a vacant building with a sprinkler, it's still going to be protected, it's going to be protected downtown. And as I understand it, Pat, isn't there even some places you can't get fire truck behind downtown, if you had to, you couldn't, you and I discussed?
But would I back up downtown and look what we could do? For the alleyways that you're talking about, that I, I, we see what going to downtown, but that's...
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
...right now. One of my, the actual fire trucks, I might go fit into that end, because of cloud zones and everything else I have to consider. So you're going to be running hopes from the end of the alley down, which delays my, first of all, we have to make the interior, either attack or rescue. I, I agree with some of the factors with, in what you're saying, you know, you can make the two-hour fire barriers, if that's what you guys decide to do, we'll make our game plan accordingly. I understand there's other components involved. For me, a lot of what you just said, there's a lot of the statistics and the studies that are done, uh, at the end of the day, my number one has to be life safety. I understand there's lots of financial aspects to this, and I do understand there's other avenues that can be portrayed, or done with this. For my own, because just like Doug, our council member, Mike Pires, said, uh, to put my name on this, if something happens, no matter if that's a one percent chance, that's back on me, and that's something I have to do. So, uh, I did take a lively, and I put a lot of hours into looking at these different cities and researching this, and this, because we, we were talking a lot about this. I understand when it was pulled out, it was...
It wasn't done in a manner that it should have been done, let's be honest.
Absolutely.
And that wasn't you, that's not on you, I'm just saying, it wasn't done in a way that should have been done.
Right, and I understand it.
Yeah, so, uh, I do want to clarify something that Councilperson Hoffman said, um, so you said if it's a sprinkled building, a vacant, it's sprinkled vacant building, then it's sprinkled, there's only one, uh, or two, I'm sorry, two that are vacant that are sprinkled, the rest are not sprinkled.
Right, no, I was just addressing the point that when we said a, an occupied building would be, you know, safer, I mean, if it's occupied and out, if there's a sprinkler, it's automatically safer, that's just the only point I was making.
But, but the vacant buildings won't be sprinkled, because there's no, if, if it costs this much, nobody will finish them.
Right, I'm just saying, if there wasn't, because we were talking about sprinkled versus non-sprinkled, uh, squatters, people sitting in, being occupied, and I understand, too, that a town has to, we have that business, and we don't want to drive people away, so that's why this is such a sensitive area, um, because we want to be able to build, and we want to be able to have people coming downtown, we want to be able to have people enjoy it, but at the end of the day, it's still about life safety and not...
Point, and I guess this is just my recommendation, if, you know, I work with Doug very well, if this goes a different route, and we, you guys decide to go to bar barriers, so, we'll make our game plan accordingly, and we'll do what we need to protect it the best way possible.
Chief is the Tumal Hotel, a sprinkled building, I believe it is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because I know it's being sold, and I know they're planning on converting that to, uh, low-rate housing, as opposed to hotel.
Not low-rate.
It's not going to be low-rate housing.
Not low-rate?
The current plan is market-grade housing. It'll be a historic rehabilitation, but it'd be market-grade housing, and there will be sprinkler improvements that are required as part of the rehabilitation. There's parts of the building that are sprinkled to today's code, uh, and then the basements is not sprinkled at all, and we'll have to have that added.
To the bottom line.
I apologize for having the long information, so...
You're willing to work with any plan?
Yeah, no, absolutely, as I said, I, there's a lot of contributing facts that were done prior, and I know you guys, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, and I don't want to keep on saying that money was, you know, behind a lot of this, uh, but it is a factor.
But if I'm understanding what you're saying, as fire chief, your recommendation would be to lean along with the 2021 rate, where there's no amendments, no...
Yeah, I recommend it.
Okay, now, I would be in favor of seeing what kind of grant money's out there for that, and I need to be on board with the city to help the owners of buildings, depending on what the grant would be versus what the city can give versus what it would cost to do that. A lot of people think I'm against downtown, or I'm against Church Street, because I'm not, you know what I mean?
I just started researching that, because I already have it, and I've seen a little one paper here, and I have a tax incentives that are out there for people with the sprinkler systems in these commercial buildings. I get it, this is not an easy thing, and this is not going to, this will always be able to, no matter what you decide this time of year we have.
Well, I think you need to make clear, too, that business people, downtown people, emergency people, this isn't us versus...
No, absolutely not.
This is a work together to find the best solution for everybody, because like I said, we want people to tumble, we want them safe, we want them profitable, we want them to enjoy the town, so I don't want anybody to, to misunderstand, this is not a us versus anybody here, family versus anybody. I think also, what we're talking about is, um, when the amendment was in place before, it's not, and right now, we're saying they have to be sprinkled. With the amendment, it wasn't saying that there was no fire prevention or anything, there, there were still measures that had been taken, you know, like if the, it was, you could put in a sprinkler, or you had to have other fire safety preventive measures, so it wasn't a zero to a hundred, there was a gradation in there. So I think you're talking about a building that has sprinklers, sure, much safer, a building that has nothing, um, and we're somewhere in between with the amendment on most of those things.
Well, and even when we had a conversation, um, with a few of us, too, it was, um, even taking the amendment a step further and looking at going to the egress and, um, like the walls, I don't know all the terminology I'm talking about.
You're talking about the penetrations between buildings.
Yes, thank you. So there were, like, there was a, a next step, is there a next step? So again, it's not that, I just want to be clear, we are, I, I agree with you, safety is number one, I've said that since the beginning, that in the end, it comes down to safety, and if we can't do it, we can't do it, um, but if we can work together and figure out a way to kind of meet in the middle, then, um, great. If we can figure out, I, I've heard like tax incentives, too, so that's great to say, like, sitting here right now, like, yeah, we'll offer tax incentives, but again, in two years, we, it could be a whole new council up here, too, and what's that going to look like also? So I just think it's something to, just on all levels, we just need to continue the conversation.
I have a quick, uh, I'm curious now, with all the conversation going on, is there a chance, maybe someone in Ashland is going to, if a building is not sprinkled, would their, uh, property insurance go up?
Yes, it's the, the cost factor for a sprinkler system is approximately thirty-five percent savings for your insurance. How that is with the cost of a whole sprinkler?
This is there also, this is there also a rule that they have to have, some port, port of fire extinguishers on deck, so that people could at least escape, they're not expected to put out fires, but if you were trapped and you needed a fire extinguisher, you've got to have one.
For the residential?
No, I'm talking downtown.
For the downtown, yes, for, of course, you have to have, uh, fire extinguishers inside them, yes.
Right, thank you.
I also, um, I think that Fred, and Fred wasn't able to be here today, he has, um, had another conflict because of the time, or the change, um, anyways, but I do remember him identifying, too, that some insurers wouldn't insure you if you had a sprinkler system because of the potential damage, too, and he, like, and helping some, and again, I don't, don't quote me for that, I don't remember exactly what he said, but it was something to that, so...
I'm, say, I say yes or no?
No, I'm just saying.
I've not heard that in my research.
Yeah, I just thought, yeah.
I've definitely heard that on the residential side, but some residential insurers don't want to insure single-family with sprinklers.
And I did figure that, and that's where a lot of the, not, uh, exceptions for residential homes, that's where a lot of that came into play.
What, if, if you're interested in making exceptions for residential homes, trusting that, um, there could be a way to build out a sprinkler system, you might also consider that with businesses as well, because, I mean, just because you haven't accepted an exception as passed, but you're going to accept an exception for, uh, residential property and trust that people, professionals have made the right corrections in order to be a pass sprinkler, is kind of, it is a way out, and also residential homes don't require two-hour barrier, which is a step further for, uh, for a business that's not taking into consideration with residential homes.
Well, we talked about that, kind of, to our barriers, because our buildings are right next to, I mean, they're connected.
But we're talking between uses of the same building, so it's two-hour separation between upstairs and downstairs.
Yeah, yeah, and then firewalls, we're talking about the alarm system, you know, and we're back to, part of that is the breaching that you can do between the walls, because the pipe chases, and the cables are ran, and once again, in checking with the, it's not just here, the walls are breached all the time, they're putting stuff through, and every time you do that, it's not just the fire, it's the smoke, the smoke is just as deadly.
So, I don't consider it exactly the same for the civil fact that with a residential home, you do not have the commercial load below, what's going to be in that building? Is it a restaurant, is it a paint store? Is it a clothing store? The firewall changes?
Yeah, and I think that's where we talked about, well, there are certain incidents that it's like, okay, no, this, like, we would ensure that there was, like, if there's a restaurant downstairs, that makes sense to have, like, maybe, uh, a sprinkler, but apartments in this council, like, um, we, I know that we have a lot... But apartments in this council, like, we, I know that we have a lot of, like, residences that have turned to apartments. Do they have sprinklers?
I would have.
Only third floor?
Only third floor?
And only if it, if.
But under this new code, they should because it's more than.
But they were already there before the global end of the effect.
Right, and I.
So if they rent a thing?
I don't, this, I don't know that this code.
I thought that it did.
This code doesn't require all multi-family to be sprinkled, I don't think. It's four or something shouldn't be sprinkled regardless.
I think that should be that.
I'd have to look at the code for sure, but not all multi-family. I think what gets into some of the issues of downtown is mixing uses to the building, having residential upstairs and commercial downstairs.
And what starts out being today and saying this is, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that, too.
In a year could be completely different.
And that's kind of where the two-hour barrier, you meant it's not required residential.
Right, but in residential, multi-family, there are, you know, there's fire hockey between apartments. There is some separation between apartment units or between floors of apartment buildings that, you know, is not the case in those conversions, because those conversions are scary.
Is our second level downtown, are they sprinkled since they've been recently renovated? Made living quarters upstairs?
No, because they were done before.
The first one that will really have been sprinkled is the ongoing Capitol Lofts at Capitol Theater. Before that, it wasn't a standard practice, it was just third trace.
Yes.
And what about the Hoffman Building?
It is because it's with multi-story.
Right, okay.
So there were a couple that were done, like, were in the middle and then those projects were stalled when the code changed.
Anything that was under permit before the code changed did get to finish under its previous permit. And it was just a developing.
So what's the desire of the council? Because you have a very specific code in place now that was approved last summer that requires sprinkler systems, no exceptions. So for the benefit of Phil and the city staff and the fire department, what is the desire of the council? Do you want them to put together some kind of a draft that would allow for some variations to be considered? Or what direction, I think they need some direction on where you want them to go with all this or we'll be sitting here spinning our wheels forever?
I guess I would like to see that, I mean, I, or continue the conversation, I guess. I don't want to see it die today, I think a continued conversation is important.
I think we should look at some exceptions and someone would have to make recommendations beyond that. Me, I'm not capable of that, but someone would have to make recommendations for exceptions if the council approves that.
And also into, like, ways to assist in putting fire codes, financial lower tax incentives, or not fire codes, fire.
With that, is that feeling to work together?
Oh, yeah.
To prepare something in the draft, so the council has something to take a look at.
I don't think we're as far as, or committed what some people are, or coming to a conclusion where. Ryan may could say the side of the worst on them, it's just coming together.
How, how, just roughly, how long do you think it will take before you have something, thirty days, sixty days?
I think, what's our schedule and when to start, thirty days, sixty days, what do you think?
Yeah, I think.
Take the time we need, so we can.
I, I would, as long as the conversation continues and we can follow up, then that kind of stuff, then they guys work together.
I'd like to say something, you know, most of the points that I brought up in the last meeting were already touched upon tonight. The biggest thing that I want to impress upon you is the future development of the tumble. There's already a lot of barriers in place to renovate buildings that have been there like for forty or fifty years. I don't know if they're unsafe, but it's a daunting task to go in there and look at, wow, I'm going to need $200,000 for the rentals for the water. I just hate to see the progress that we've made in the last ten to fifteen years really stall out because of the added expenses. Now, if we do have some ways to offset those costs, I mean, that, that might be beneficial. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, if we had competitors in that line of work, you know, we can probably keep the cost down. But when you're starting to look at no variances and just telling a flat yes or no, there's a lot of gray area between, and I think that individual review might be necessary. Lastly, with the change in use, I mean, what if you have an office space on the second level next to residential housing and then a retail store down below? And then the office moves out and that becomes residential housing. So is now that required sprinkles, sprinkler systems? I mean, you can change the usage pretty damn quick in a lot of these buildings.
And that's where we're going to, our, we're making exceptions. We're making exceptions to the, to start what happened at the death. And then that's where we're having problems.
If you have a Martha Smith and Crandie that leaves and, you know, somebody puts six cubicles in there in front of it as an office, why is the risk higher? Why would that be a sprinkler system where it hasn't been before? I mean, there just has to be more thought into it. And I don't think one case should be the same as every other.
Direction to continue the conversation together?
So you guys did something prepared, you look at spray impact.
I guess we need tomorrow, we give a hooking.
Does anybody have anything else to say about the changes? If not, I believe we've covered all of our items for our work sessions. Now, to entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Another one thing I'll.
Oh, yes.